There he is. Okay. So, good evening. It is Monday, April the 12th, and it is 6:30, and we're here for the monthly meeting of the Mayor and City Council. And if I could ask you to all join us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Interesting.
One nation.
Nation under God.
Indivisible. Liberty and justice.
This is for all.
Thank you. Thank you all for taking time to join us this evening. And hope you had enjoyed a beautiful weekend. It was certainly lovely weather. First of all, I want to recognize that this is Deputy Mayor Bonnie Oster's last meeting, official meeting with us. But however, we're going to squeeze another one in. We've decided, as you'll hear me say in a moment, that we're going to have a special meeting yet before a second meeting yet this month. So it's not quite done, Bonnie, but thank you very much for all your service. And we'll get to your comments and things, and any other comments of anything we would like to make in a moment. But just a reminder that there will be an election on May 8th. And voter registration continues through April the 23rd. With this coming Saturday, the 17th, I'll having a Saturday registration for both the Board of Public Works and the city at the windows of City Hall and at the Board of Public Works from 8 to 12. As everyone, I think, knows, there are separate registrations required for the Board of Public Works and the city elections. So I would urge you to please check and make sure that you are registered. And if not, please do update your registration. So you will be able to vote on the 8th. Again, there will be two places to vote on the 8th. It, it is my pleasure to announce that we have completed the CRS rating review or the Flood and National Flood Insurance Program Community Service Rating Review. And we were awarded a level eight class, which will qualify our residents for a reduction in their flood insurance. Those of you who participated in the flood insurance, increasing the amount to 10% over our previous level of 5%. So we're very appreciative for our building officials working through that with FEMA and achieving that level of compliance. So I note that the citation reads, "Community has undertaken a series of meaningful activities to protect its citizens from losses caused by flooding, and it significantly exceeded the requirements of the NFIP participation and effective floodplain management." It's a nice statement for this community, which enjoys our relationship with the city, but we makes us very vulnerable. Also like to remind you that there's going to be a hazardous waste, a drug takeback on Saturday, the 24th. That's a week from Saturday, and that will be at the Schley Avenue BPW facility from 8 until 2. That has always been a very successful program. We didn't have it last year because of COVID, but we already have it this year. Encourage you to take advantage of that. And I note that because of the election, the Mayor and City Council meeting in May will actually occur one week later than our normal meeting. So we'll be meeting the 17th of May, which is one week after our normal meeting. Also, it's April, and we're doing spring cleanup. And every year, the city has offered three trash bulk trash pickups at no charge to our residents. However, you must call to make an appointment. The first bulk trash pickup will occur this Wednesday on the 14th. And that bulk trash pickup has already been fully accounted for. So there are no slots available for the 14th. However, there still are openings on the 21st and the 28th. Please call City Hall to make an appointment. And I would also note that we have begun to work, as we had approved in the budget. We've begun to work on the M and T lot of improvements, and we hope to have that lot up and operational in time for meter season next month. As I mentioned, we are going to schedule a second meeting this month. It will be two weeks from tonight, April the 26th at 7:00 PM. And some of the items on tonight's agenda will be pushed off until that meeting on the 26th. And so I would note that we will be taking items H1, which is relating to the lease of the Great Park Park and H2, which relating to the Sweet Swing Bridge and H4 relating to the tennis course refurbishment and I don't I8 relating to parking and vehicular traffic items off of the agenda. These items will reappear on the 26th. Other than that, I think I would like to turn this over to Bonnie for comments that she had asked me for to allow her to make, but please, Bonnie, the floor is yours. Thank you very much for all your service to the city and most appreciated.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I can say that after nine years, it has been, and I know this is a hackneyed phrase, phrase, but it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the citizens of Lewis as a member of council. I particularly want to thank the city staff for its help and its good humor. I have certainly asked my share of stupid questions, and they have never once laughed in my face, even though I probably deserved it. So thanks to everybody at City Hall, especially during the COVID time. I also want to thank the members of the Commissions, Boards and Committees of the city without these capable volunteers who devote an enormous amount of time and thought to important city issues. The quality of life in Lewis would simply not be anywhere near what it is today. And finally, to my fellow council people there on the Brady Bunch screen, I want to thank you, both the current members of council and past members of council for their support and service. It is a serious responsibility to govern on behalf of others. And the mayor and council do the best they can to do so responsibly and wisely with the help of the citizens and the staff. So please go out there, get to know the candidates and the issues before the election and be sure to vote on May 8th. So with that, thank you, Mayor, and.
Thank you very much, Bonnie.
I'm still going to be on the rest of the meeting, and now that you got scheduled me for April.
We couldn't let you off that easy, but thank you.
We're also going to be scheduling some public hearings to see.
Yes, Rob, you had some.
May I respond? I, I think the thanks are due to Bonnie for her years of service, two more than I've had. As, as I've said in the past, Bonnie is not only hardworking and conscientious, but she's intellectually demanding. And I don't think she's ever contributed to a discussion without improving the, the content of it, and we will miss her shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, here.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. And Bonnie, we're not going to let you off as, as Anne Marie noted. We're going to schedule a couple of public hearings yet tonight. You'll have plenty of opportunity to appear on this, as you described it, Brady Bunch screen.
I look forward to it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mayor, before you go on, you on the agenda item, I want to let you know I'm going to be recusing myself from item I5. And instead of dropping out and making you call me back, I'll just mute myself and go off video.
Okay, thank you. All right. Very good.
Mayor, I'll do the same. I believe it's H5 when that comes about.
Okay, very fine. All right. Are there any other announcements from the table? Okay, hearing none, then I think we can move on to item E1, which is the presentation of the 2020 Elaine Bisbee Award. And I think for those of you, we have 30 attendees tonight. Many of you are aware that Elaine Bisbee was a long-serving city manager for the city, and she retired a number of years ago. And in recognition of her long service and high-quality service to the city, at that, at the time of her retirement, the city established the Elaine Bisbee Award to recognize city employees who provide exemplary service and to the community and to their fellow workers throughout the year. And this year, I'm pleased to announce that we've decided to award, based upon nominations that were received, the, this year's Elaine Bisbee Award to PFC Casey Cracks of the Lewis Police Department. And I believe Casey might be on with us this evening. There he is.
I am.
Casey, congratulations and thank.
Thank you. Thank you. It's an honor. I appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate it. You've been with us just three years, but obviously you've been a great member of the force. And we, we really appreciate all the service that you have brought and the attitude that you bring every day to work. Thank you very.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And the recognition is appreciated also.
Right. We will have an opportunity to do this award in person sometime when you're on duty at City Hall. But look forward to again saying thank you in person. Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. I made second to the eighth. There's a, there's a name that appears on the screen that everybody sees every time we meet. That's Janine Heffley, and she is our municipal clerk. And she, while she's behind the scenes, she's a very busy woman, making minutes and keeping track of schedules and making sure we post agendas on, on time and correctly. And so this is a proclamation recognizing this municipality importance of municipal clerk municipal operations. And Janine, we thank you very much for all your, all your service to the city and to all of us who frequently rely very heavily upon you to make sure we have all the necessary information that we need. It's an unsung hero, and we never see your face, but on this screen, but we do see you constantly in City Hall. So thank you very much. Also, then moving on to item 3, E3 is a public service recognition, a week, which is also May 2nd to the 8th. And at this time of year, we would have normally done our volunteer appreciation luncheon, but due to COVID, we're not able to do that this year as we were not able to do last year. But here again, as was said by the deputy mayor, we are totally dependent upon operating the city with so many volunteers and so much public service. And we thank everyone for their service that they do, that they provide to the city. We could not run this government without the help of the various people, whether they're firefighters, policemen, health employees, or even volunteers who provide such things as Lewis and Bloom and many, many other services and serve on our commissions if we didn't have the benefit of those people stepping up and volunteering. So thank you very much for your service. And finally, the item E4 is the Arbor Day Proclamation. We have been a tree city for 19 years now. And under that declaration, we have over 900 trees that are recognized in the city as being part of the Arbor Day grouping that we offer, and all of these trees are numbered. And you may see a little brass tag hanging on some trees as you move around the city. So we do have a tree inventory, and it isn't often that we lose a tree. But when we do, we usually replace it with the same type of tree as at all possible. And I want to thank our Parks and Rec Commission for all they do to help us with our city parks. And of course, Janet Reeves is our park and rec coordinator for all her service. Is trees are a very important part of keeping the us green, helping us deal with ozone issues. And I'm glad to see that we have so many trees. Again, this year because of COVID, we will not be having an Arbor Day celebration in person. However, Janet informed me that we will be planting a magnolia tree in Zwanndale Park at some point in the next couple of weeks, probably on April the 30th, direct in recognition of Arbor Day. So again.
Add one thing, Mayor. Specifically, everyone you've thanked, completely perfect. I just wanted to single out Marty Thompson. Who is out there checking on the health of the trees, pruning them herself, working with the contractor and make sure that our trees are in tip-top shape. So thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Marty. And Marty has worked hard to maintain that inventory. They are the little tags on the trees are actually quite small, but I remember her walking around with a little spike and the tags and putting them on the trees as we first started to inventory them to that level. So thanks again, Marty, for all your work. Moving then on to item F, Consent Agenda. In the consent agenda, we have the Mayor and City Council meetings from February 11th, Mayor and City Council meeting, March the 8th, Mayor and City Council meeting and the budget. And we also have the Board of Public Works meeting minutes, Financial Activity Report, the Police Activity Report, the Fire Department Activity Report. Is there any one of these that anyone would like to hold out for discussion?
Mayor, I wouldn't like to hold up the, the Police Department Activity Report, but I would like to discuss the police briefly. Is that agenda? Think is appropriate.
Okay, so if you would, if we can have a motion for the, we can certainly. Okay, do we have a second? Okay, thanks, Bonnie. The motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor. I, many opposed. Motion carries. Okay, Rob, you want to go ahead with your question with the Police Department or your.
Question so much, but among the materials that the chief sent us, along with his report, was the recognition, the gold level recognition for 2020 as part of the Lexipol Connect Customer Recognition Program, which recognizes law enforcement agencies for excellence in policy and maintenance and training. And I thought that was worth mentioning and congratulating the chief for leading the, the, our program to that distinction.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, then moving on to the city manager report, Anne Marie, would you like to go ahead?
All right. Well, March has been a busy month. April seems to be following in suit. So work has continued on the water main replacement on East, East Fourth Street and Coleman Avenue. Water mains and sewer services are completed. Also in that project is the ADA ramps and crosswalks at Manila, Adams and King's Highway, and also Cedar and Savannah. So that those at Cedar and Savannah, the work has not yet begun. All of this work is, is supposed to be completed this month. The Coleman Avenue, we're hoping to be fully completed this week. The BPW has, has been working on the water main replacement on Piloton Road. That will continue through mid-May, and then they will pause for the summer season and resume in the fall. And really what they're resuming in the fall is the mill and overlay of, of the road. The next capital project or one of the next capital projects to start moving forward is the rehabilitation of the tennis pickleball basketball court at Canalfront Park. Last month, council approved the bid for the premier surfacing. Several members of the community, particularly pickleball players, have come forward expressing concerns over the surface choice. So staff along with GMB are continuing to do some research regarding the suitability for pickleball. And we were planning to report back on that this evening, but we've actually gotten some, some information that we're continuing to follow up on. So that will be reconsidered by mayor and council at the April 26th meeting that the mayor mentioned earlier. The city held a bid opening on March 30th for the restrooms at the Margaret H. Rollins Community Center Meeting Room. These will be constructed outside of the current building footprint and will be available primarily to serve the, the meeting room, but then we will be also making it so that they can be used by the park in particular for the concert series and events like that. The, the bids came in higher than the estimate, and Charlie O'Donnell will review some of this when we get to that item on the agenda. So we, we are going to be making that recommendation this evening. And our hope is that we have the project done by mid to late summer and that we will resume our in-person meetings and they will resume at the Rollins Center where we have more room to spread out. We continue to have our bi-weekly calls with the governor regarding COVID, and the Board of Health has been meeting every three weeks. We're really at the point now where vaccination is, is widespread. Most members of the population, everybody over 16 is now eligible for the vaccine. There are many locations in the area that are administering the vaccine. Even as we move toward, you know, more widespread vaccination, the social distancing, mask wearing and hand washing will continue to be important. The, the mayor did mention the municipal election. Both the, the city of Lewis and the Lewis Board of Public Works will have the municipal elections on May 8th or municipal on the board elections on May 8th. The registration for the city is separate from what you may have done when you registered to vote with the state of Delaware. And the registration with the Board of Public Works is also separate. So make sure that you, you register with both the city and with the Board of Public Works. The Greater Lewis Coalition will have candidate forums this week on Thursday at 6 o'clock and on Friday at 6 o'clock. Thursday is for the BPW and Friday is for the, the council. And then, as the mayor mentioned, on Saturday morning from 8 until noon, both the BPW and the city will be taking in-person voter registrations for people who, who wish to register in person and can't do so during the week. As it relates to personnel, we're continuing to recruit for seasonal positions. Our parking, I think, were just about finished. And then maintenance and lifeguards, we still are in the recruiting process. We have also started, or I guess concluded the recruitment for a code enforcement officer to fill the vacancy caused by Steve Barrow becoming the assistant building official. Our candidate has been selected and will begin next week on, or yes, next week on, on April 19th. We are also recruiting for a customer service specialist, which is, that, that's the, the receptionist job handling the, when we do open back up and pull to the public, handling a lot of the, the customer traffic, phone calls, you know, helping a lot of customer service work. The city has also been working with the city of Milford to recruit a local government management fellow through the International City County Management Association. So we held interviews on that last week. And then Henry Bainham, the assistant building official in the building department, has announced his retirement after 15 years of service with the city of Lewis. He will be with us through April 30th, and then he will go on to his next adventure. Our, I will note, our building permit activity was, was very heavy in, in March, as it has been throughout the pandemic. But it's even picked up more in the spring months. Staff and members of the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee and the mayor and council have had meetings of various participants in various meetings with Phil Barnes from the Institute for Public Administration and from staff from the Delaware Coastal Program to work together on a project under the resilient community partnership. We're still kind of honing, honing in on the details, but I think that will be a benefit to the people of Lewis. And the idea is that it will be something that could be replicated elsewhere in the state. We have started at the staff level, looking at the beach parking committee recommendations and, you know, doing some of the, the things that I guess I would say are mainly the low-hanging fruit. There, one of the recommendations, for instance, was the inventory and consistency among the no parking signs from street to street. So that, that has started. We will be painting, repainting the yellow stripes at, along Cedar at the, the intersections. So a number of the, of the things that were clear that they were ready for implementation are moving forward. There are other, other areas where we will be gathering data and reporting back to mayor and council. See, we, we do have Oceanside at League Cleaning Services. Will be taking over cleaning of city facilities beginning on May 1st. Janet Reeves and I met with Matt Carter of Quest, and we're working on developing an agreement for him for the, the concession of chairs, umbrellas and other beach recreational items at Roosevelt Inlet. I have met with staff and the architect for Cape Henlopen, I, I said high school on my report, I'll change that. Cape Henlopen School District and regarding the, the middle school so that it will, I guess you guys will work on or take action on an ordinance tonight. But we also have on May 3rd, the, the joint site plan review ad hoc committee will need to review the, the plans for the, the middle school. Janelle Cornwell and I have been fielding inquiries, talking to residents, talking to the Delaware Geological Survey in Denrick regarding the source water protection overlay. Again, that's on this evening's agenda for setting a public hearing. Ellen Lorraine and I have, have been working with Enterprise Leasing about the city's vehicle needs. And I met with Sharon Lynn from Rehoboth Beach to discuss the changes that both municipalities need to make on our gross receipts rental tax. Our ordinances are, are identical. So we are looking at the potential that the, the state may impose a short-term rental tax. And that would require, in order for it not to affect our gross receipts rental tax, it requires rewriting how that, that section of the code presents. So we're both working on that in tandem so that we can, well, one, one can review it once. And, and that we can. And that we can, again, continue to have comparable ordinances because, again, right now they mirror each other. So that's what I've got.
Great, thank you, Anne Marie. Are there any questions? Bonnie, looks like you have a question.
I don't know if it's a question so much as an observation. I have been, I noticed on here that we had two permit requests for swimming pools, I assume that swimming pools. It's been my observation recently that more and more people are putting in pools. And leaving aside the problems that causes with impervious surface, one of the things that I'm hearing anecdotally from citizens is that sometimes when one person puts in a pool, their neighbors start to have water problems. So one thing I'd like to ask staff to take a look at is whether or not, and if so, how to put in additional requirements when a pool permit comes in to, you know, maybe an engineering report or something to try to ensure that one person's swimming pool doesn't become somebody else's pool in their basement. Because it does, it does seem, again, anecdotally, it does seem to be a problem. And as, since more and more people seem to think they need a pool in their backyard, I'm worried that this is going to become more of an issue. So I just wanted to raise that. That's all.
Thank you. We can certainly look at that. We can ask Robin to take it from there. Okay, thank you. Anything other comments from? Hearing none, I think we can accept Anne Marie's report by common consensus. As we move on then to Section H, Uncommunism Business. As I mentioned, Item H1, Presentation Possible Action on the Renewal of a Hunting License of the Great Marsh Associates, Inc. We're going to table this activity and defer it until our April the 26th meeting. This is the lease, that is a lease, a license agreement that has been gone on for many years. You had both a 10-year, 10-year lease, our license agreement, and it's up for renewal this year. It is not time sensitive, so we do not have to act on it today. There were some questions that were posed that we need to have answered. And we'll be back with those, with that discussion on April the 26th. Then moving on to Item H2 is a presentation of possible action on the agreements regarding the placement of the swing bridge on the city parcel at the end of American Legion Road. As you'll recall from previous discussions we've had, this is the swing bridge that is no longer in service, that is going to be relocated, proposed to be relocated at the end of American Legion. This will require an agreement with, between the city and Del Dot for this, for this bridge to be relocated. And as we've discussed at previous meetings, the idea is that Lewis Junction Brickwater Trail, or Lewis Junction Group would be taking over the management of this and the maintenance of this project, once it is placed by Del Dot. And both, that's going to require two agreements, one between Del Dot and the city and one between the city and the group that will be maintaining it. And we'll be back to discuss that. Those two agreements are still under review and need further work. So we'll be discussing those again on April the 26th. So then moving on to Item H3 is a presentation of possible action from a citizen to add a clock to Lewis Commercial District. And Steve Walker actually brought this to our attention several months ago. And in your packet, there is a picture of where he has, after discussion where he's suggesting and recommending that we consider placing it. I note that in the image that he provided, it is green. He has told me that it would definitely be black if we were to place it. This is in the city right of way. It is in alignment with the the bike rack that's just behind it and the trash barrels and the recycle barrels that are also in that same section. This is in front of Citizens Bank. There's a lot of communities of our size and even larger who have a center clock in their downtown district. This is a feature that brought, an idea brought forth by a citizen with the idea that it would be, all the workings of it would be internally housed in the base of the clock. And the fundraising for this clock would be, and the maintenance of it would be taken up by citizen group who are interested in seeing such a clock placed. I think Steve was going to join us tonight, Anne Marie. I don't know whether he, I didn't see him on the list.
He's in there.
Okay, good. Maybe you could bring him up. Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, I'm there. Yeah, I looked around, I think I explained a lot of it last time we had the meeting. The, I think the nice part about this, the mayor's already sort of discussed where it's going to be and it's, the way it sort of stays out of the pedestrian walkway. It's away from the curb, so no cars would run into it. And I was just down there the other day and I noticed that there's an electric line that comes up just three feet from it. So there's almost nothing that needs to be done by the city except a small block, about a 12-foot, 12-inch square block, about two or three inches high, a base for the clock to be mounted to. And that needs electric to come up out of it. And the electric is, like I say, there's a outlet there three feet away from it. So I'm sure that could be teed off of that very easily. And it's nicely shaded by the tree. The tree sort of grows up over it, but not in front of it. And it's visible all the way up and down the street. I really looked at the site from all angles and it, I really think it would add something to the city. So.
Thank you, Steve. Questions from the table or comments? Yes, Bonnie?
Well, I just said, I'm sorry, Andrew, do you want to go ahead? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bonnie.
I just had one question. It's hard to tell because of the way the photograph is, but how far is this proposed sighting from that bike rack? Are they going to crowd one another? I just can't tell from the photo.
It's about four feet. So I think it looks to me like, I was wondering about that too when I saw that. And I think there's plenty of room. I've actually never, never seen a bike tied up to that. But if you, if you put a bike against it and chain your bike up there, there would be plenty of room for the bike to be there with the clock.
Okay, I'll defer to the bicyclists in the group as to, I simply don't know. It looks okay, I guess. I just can't tell from the photo.
Rob, or Andrew, you had a question?
Yeah, Steve, I was just wondering if you could just give a little more context to the maintenance that's required and sort of the mechanism to how your group or what group will sort of be responsible for that.
Right, well, I'll put together a little GoFundMe, but I already have sort of commitments from a lot of people for it. We will set up a little fund. It's $600 a year to maintain the clock. They'll come down, they take it apart, they check it for everything, make sure everything's working, do a complete maintenance on it. And so that part will be taken care of. It'll all be privately funded. If any businesses want to get involved, that would be wonderful. We'd love to have them as well. But the, it's about $16,000 and to put the clock up, they will install it. They'll send ahead of time. Once we okay it, then I'll get them, they'll send the exact measurements and everything that's needed for it, for the base. So that the city would have to put in that base. And that would be the only responsibility by the city. And I suppose we could pay for that too. Does that answer all your questions?
Yeah, thank you, Steve.
Sure.
Go ahead, Rob.
Following up on that question of Andrew's, the $600 maintenance a year, would that be something that you would raise year after year? Or would there be a kind of an endowment fund to finance that?
Well, Ben says we're right there with Citizens Bank. I thought I would do the GoFundMe through Citizens Bank and make an account there that could be funded as needed. But originally, we could put in for, you know, a five or 10-year maintenance fee in the GoFundMe page and then put a lot in ahead of time. And then a lot of interest, you know, interest would build, well, not in the bank at these days, I guess. But it would maintain in there and then as time went on and needed, we could add to that, add to that fund.
I think it would be attractive to have a healthy pot to start with, to defray maintenance over some period of years.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea to me too. So that's an extra $6,000 to take us 10 years. And so I think we could, I think we could raise that.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Dave.
Yeah, thank you, Steve, for your presentation. Is the, is the face of the clock illuminated?
Yes, it is. And it says on the top, that little flag up top will say Louis Established 1631, is it? And then, on the dial face, it will say the first city and the first state, first town in the first state. And that, that is illuminated. It's a, like a Lexan product on there that's not scratchable or breakable. And it's, they're pretty sturdy. I think these guys have been around and building clocks for 100 years. And I think they've probably, you know, had rocks thrown at them and, you know, every kind of damage to them that they, possible. And so they've, they've really done an incredible job of making these clocks really sturdy. So little, little rascals can't do too much damage to them.
Okay, good. And it is a two-faced clock, correct?
Two-faced, yes.
Okay, and the base that you described that would need to be constructed, that, would that be shrouded by the actual, I think this is a metal casting base, is that correct for the clock?
Yes, it is.
And would that actually fit, that would actually cover the concrete, is that correct?
No, no, that whole base there would sit on the concrete. So if the, if the little square of concrete and there, it may be a little less than a foot because the base of the clock is about eight inches. So maybe 10 inches square, but it needs enough to have the four bolts coming up out of it that the clock attaches to. And then that face, now that could have, you know, if they take some time, we could do like a little beveled edge on it or something that, that makes it. And possibly we could paint it black so that it looks like a part of the base of the clock.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Other questions or comments from the table? No, Steve, I would note also that it looks like Betsy Reamer is on from the chamber and she might be able to put the word out to chamber members to help you get started with your fundraising as well, so.
Oh, that'd be great.
So certainly.
And is there somebody in particular in the city that we need to talk to about the base?
I think we can, we can work with Janet Reeves and through our maintenance department to come up with that. Janet's the Parks and Rec Coordinator, but certainly our city maintenance department would be able to work with you on that.
Great, that'd be true.
Because you're expecting us to also run the electric line, correct, over to the base?
Right, right, from that, from that little electric stand that's there. So, and most of that is underneath just a gravel so that very little, if any, sidewalk needs to be disturbed in order to put that in. You know, I think a little area for the base to be really attached down below. I think it needs to be thick and down through the concrete, through the brick. But it's so close to that, that I don't, you know, it's not, it's not a big deal of ripping up a lot of sidewalk to get, to get electric to it. So should be fairly easy.
All that sidewalk is paver set on sand, so it's, you're not disrupting any cement.
That'd be great. That's great.
Right, council, is there a motion considered to consider this?
Fair, I'd like to move that we thank Steve and authorize him to proceed with his fundraising with the expectation that if the fundraising is successful, it will be installed where he shows it.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
May I suggest just one friendly amendment? Which is that, that when the time comes, if the fundraising is successful, that, you know, an appropriate agreement is entered into between the city, the organization for the, you know, for the ongoing maintenance of the clock.
Yep, okay.
That sounds good to me, Bonnie.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any? Steve, thank you very much for bringing this idea forward. We look forward to the successful
Thank you.
effort that you're going to put forth and forward to seeing the clock downtown in the near future. Thank you very much.
Also, all right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, then we mentioned Item H4, which is Presentation Possible Action on the reconsideration of the contract for the rehabilitation of Canalfront Park Tennis and Basketball Courts regarding resurfacing. We mentioned earlier that this too will appear on our April the 26th agenda. So we will be taking no action on that this evening. Then moving on to Item H5, which is Discussion of Possible Action Ordinance to Admon Chapter 197 Zoning Attachment Table 4 of Dimensional Regulations for Non-Residential Zones of the Municipal City Code of the City of Lewis, related to maximum building height in the CFE. That's Commercial Facilities Education Zone. And this, we had a public hearing on this. And we have Brian Bassett and Brian Andrews joining us this evening to talk about this. If there are any questions from the table, our public hearing is closed. And so can we bring, is Andrew Williams going to, or excuse me, is Brian going to join us this evening? If there are questions, if there are any?
I, I guess I thought that because the hearing is closed, that we wouldn't be bringing anybody in, is that correct?
That's fine, okay. Okay, I was already, I think we heard, we had a good discussion at the public hearing the other night. Is there any further discussion or what is council's pleasure? I know Andrew has dropped off. He's recusing himself from this. Yes, Rob?
Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question I'd like to ask. I think this question should be directed to Janelle. My question is, I noticed in your description in the Agenda Item Report, which I think actually was penned by Anne Marie, so maybe we'll put her on the stand here, is you mentioned that it's described as a minimum 50-foot setback. And my question is, is this additional to the existing setback, for example, for the side setback is existing 10-foot and the rear is 20-foot? So is this an additional 50 feet to those existing setbacks?
Only if you want the building height to be increased.
But it's not over, it's not 10 plus.
Yeah, it's a total of, so it'd be the, you know, the 10 plus the 40 or the, so the overall total setback is 50 feet.
So the total would be 50 feet?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Fair, I've got a question. I take it, Janelle, that the change is going to be accomplished by the new Node 5 in the Table of Dimensional Regulations?
Correct.
But I think that a Node 5 is actually in the wrong column. It's in the column for healthcare rather than for education.
We can make sure it's in the correct column.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good one.
Any other questions or comments from the table?
I just wanted to reiterate what we talked about the other night.
I just wanted to reiterate what we talked about the other night at public hearing that. There's that by making this change throughout the CFE zones, we're affecting only a limited number. Of a limited number of structures, none of which, with a possible exception of the Fred Thompson Building. We anticipate will 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 need will would be increased to 50 feet. So this is, this largely will only affect the proposed middle school.
Right.
Isn't it also affecting the Verden Center?
University of Delaware campus, but again, it. Their campus is large enough that any buildings would be set back.
Right, I think as we discussed at the public hearing that if it if something happened out there, it would be sort of. You know, it would be like the tree falling in the forest because there's so much room. This 10 feet would be, you know, inconsequential.
Right. Any other comments? Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll make a motion. Let me get back to the agenda here, so I have made the right motion. I would, in case you're wondering why I keep looking to the left, I've got all this stuff on my computer. I I would move that we. Amend chapter 197 zoning attachment for table of dimension regulations and for non-residential zones. Of the municipal code of the city of Lewis relating to the maximum height in CF per N E close print zone. As recommended by, as as stated in the report to council.
Second.
Okay, now we need to do a roll call vote on this, so because it is a zoning change, so. Rob, would you like to go first?
I don't know why you're picking on me, mayor, but.
On you, you you seconded it, no intent to pick on you.
Okay, well, I I vote in favor because it's, it makes a lot of sense, it was well crafted and. It will enable a very valued member of our community to construct the kind of building they they need.
Tim?
I agree with everything that Rob said. I need to, I have nothing else to add, I vote for it.
Bonnie?
I I vote for it as well for the reasons stated, and I would also commend the school district on the excellent presentation it provided to the public. As to how the this the proposed structure was designed to minimize. The 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 appearance or the appreciation of the additional scale.
Great, thank you, I too affirmative, I would also commend. The school district and the architect for created use of a very limited building envelope to come up with a school system that will meet their needs. So. Motion carries, I would note for the record that Andrew did recuse himself on this, thank you very much.
Excellent.
We can move on then to item H6, presentation, possible resolution of the mayor and city council, the city of Lewis to annex a property located at 1145 Savannah Road. Sussex County tax map 335 dash 8.15 dash 39.01 into the city of Lewis. While this is the tax description, it is the parcel located at the junction of the bike trail of on Savannah Road. On the one side of it and it's a triangular portion and we've had, we had an annexation report and we've had discussion about this. And it's a resolution to act on that.
Right, so so mayor, I I just put it on the agenda so that it would go with the the reason.
Next, I was gonna say we want it, yeah.
Right, so the.
The next thing is to is the next item is to schedule the public hearing from, correct?
Right, so the resolution for the annexation will actually be read and acted upon next month. But it goes with the rezoning, I I just kind of wanted to keep them together so that.
Okay, so then moving on to item H7, which is the presentation of possible action to schedule a public hearing on this on the same resolution that I had just read. From an AR1 in Sussex County into a general commercial zone in in the city of Lewis. And we need to schedule a public hearing, I think we are looking at the first week in May to schedule that, so.
But the property owners, so so we're looking at the first two weeks of May, the property owners for this one are. Out of town the first week in May.
Looking at doing it the next week.
Yeah, so. The 10th or the 12th, and I heard back from some, but not everybody, I know Mr. Ritz, you would. You had indicated your availability that the first week, but you didn't mention these two, so, but I think in order to accommodate the property owner, that's what we're looking at.
Okay, so it's the week of the 10th now, right?
Right, so it would be either the 10th or the 12th or the 13th, I'm sorry.
At what time of day were you talking about, Anne Marie?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock is our normal public hearing time.
I'm fine on those dates, as long as it's in the evening.
Oh, the the Joneses have their hand up, you want me to?
Yes, please, since we're gonna have this, yes. Christine and David? You're you need to unmute yourself.
Hello.
Hello, we'll actually be returning back in town on the 10th, so if we could do it the 12th or the 13th, that would be great.
Let's look at the 12th then.
At six o'clock, correct?
Yeah.
Correct. Okay, that's good for me.
Okay, so we need a motion to set that.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Like you're seconding, thank you very much. All right. All in favor? Great, thank you very much, motion, I need opposed, I don't think, I'll move on then to item. Motion carries, item I1 is discussion impossible action on a public hearing on a resolution. Mayor, city, council of Lewis dollar proposing a public hearing be held on the subject of amending article four regulations. You use regulations. Number seven of off-street parking and loading and. 14 definitions of chapter 197 zoning of the municipal code of the city of Lewis, Delaware by amending sections 197 dash 44, 197, 45. 197, 61, 197, 62, 197, 106, and 197, 1 relating to craft distillery. Suggest that we should probably hold the public hearing on the same night.
I was gonna ask you to, I was gonna ask you to repeat that, Ted, but.
Would you like me to repeat that, you can read it back when you make the motion to approve it for a public.
May I ask a question? And forgive me, Anne Marie, if if I'm just behind on this, you did allude to the home business. Part of the ordinance, it's really not so, if if I'm looking at the attachment accurately, it's really less about. A microbrewery than about home businesses, so explain that.
Dallas is gonna address that one.
Yeah, that that's my mistake, the underlining that you see as the home-based business, that's current code, so that should not, those sections should not be underlined.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to place it in an area where we deal with special uses and and this may, this is an appropriate place to place it, when I copied in. Everything's existing code, I left the underlining, so I'll I'll fix that for the public hearing.
That'd be great.
Thanks.
And for the public hearing, Janelle, I I think you've got this memo as coming from the Parks and Rec Department, you might want to. Update that.
All right, so we have a motion to set the public hearing then on the 12th. Thank you.
Yeah, I I won't repeat what you said, but I'll make a motion to.
A second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone? So Bonnie, you are gonna keep working.
Getting worse and worse.
But there is a logical end, it's just a few days after that, so anyway. Moving then on to item I2 is a presentation, possible action. For a parcel consolidation for land of Daniel Jones Clarence B Stewart and heirs located at 315 and 317. West Fourth Street Sussex County tax map 335 dash 8.07 dash 2.65.00 and 2.64.00. This is a parcel on Fourth Street, two very small sub-substandard parcels and that was. Heard by planning and zoning, Janelle, you want to talk to us a little bit about this?
Totally, so again, this is a parcel consolidation, the property owner is looking to combine the two existing small lots to create a more not. More conforming lot. They have been through the planning and zoning commission, they have, the commission did recommend approval of the parcel consolidation, recognizing that. It will still be a non-conforming lot, but it's getting closer to being a conforming lot without the ability to make it come into complete compliance. Just based on the exist, the existing properties. It also is zoned R4H, so it's a historic district, it did go through the parks, the historic through H Park. They did recommend approval of the proposed demolition and new building pending the outcome of the cross consolidation.
Janelle, do they need, is there any involvement of the board of adjustment in this?
There is not. That was discussed, but it was determined in this instance that it is not required.
Thank you.
Right, Rob, I think you touched on, was a very interesting discussion that Glenn weighed on in on. Which is, there was a lot of discussion about can you take two non-conforming lots? And create a a single lot that is still non-conforming, given the general. Rule that you're not supposed to ever, you know, do anything to increase a non-conformity, but Glenn assured. The planning commission made sense to me that that this this gets a lot closer, as Janelle just said, to a conforming lot. And, you know, how much sense would it make to deny consolidation to, you know, continue? To lots that are even further out of conformity with the minimum lot requirement than than the combined lot would be, so it it makes, it's it's a little peculiar, but. It's it's perfectly legal for our solicitor and that that issue that you correctly bring up was discussed. At the planning commission.
That's a good expression of a lie, I don't think they think that, well done.
I would note that there are, there are many parcels in the Burton Avenue subdivision and the surrounding area that are of subnormal. Paul of lots and some of them have been combined in previous years. It it has gone on and I think they've already been through. The H Park review and have had approval received there for the plans that they are proposing for the structure they plan to build on this combined lot. So, having said that.
Question.
Yes, Jim?
Yeah, thank you, first of all, I I like what we are accomplishing here, I like the idea that we're getting closer to conformity. And compliance than what we presently are. But my one question is with respect to off-street parking. And I I don't recall any kind, any provision for off-street parking. That was submitted with this plan. Can we, I'd like to address that, I'd like to, I'd like to have that answered.
That will be addressed as part of the building permit review, that is not something that is addressed as a parcel consolidation. But that will be addressed as part of the building permit to ensure that it's applying with setbacks of parking requirements.
Okay, so, and that is something that the building department would be responsible for taking care of or addressing.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
I'll make I'll make a motion, if if there's no any other, anything else?
Look like there is, go ahead, Bonnie.
Okay, I would move that council approved the request for parcel consolidation for land of Danielle Jones. Peren Clarence B Stewart and heirs close print located at 315 and 317 West Fourth. Streets Sussex County tax map 335 dash 8.07 dash 265.00 and 264.00.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Jim, or Andrew, okay, here again, we'll need to do a roll call vote on this. Who would like to go first, Tim, you want to go first?
Sure, I'll go first. I vote to approve this consolidation for the reasons that I just stated. It's getting, we're getting better, we're making, we're getting closer to our. Our to conformity and that's a good thing, so I vote for this.
Andrew?
Similar to Tim, it's. Getting closer to a standard lots and it also has gone through the process of H Park review. So I think, given that, I I vote to approve the consolidation.
Great. Rob?
Which were approved for the reasons stated by Tim and Andrew.
Bonnie?
Well, well, I generally think, you know, conformity is a is is overrated, I think. In this case, it's not, and I I think that both H Park and LPC took a good thorough look at this. We had advice from our solicitors, so I, for for those reasons and the reasons previously stated, I vote in favor.
Great, thank you, I too will vote in favor, I would note that this is a parcel that's being built on by a family that's been in Lewis for many, many, many years. And I'm glad to see that they are in the, that they're able to consolidate these two lots and turn it into a house that will meet their needs today, so I too vote in favor. Thank you very much, motion carries. We can then move on to item I3, which is presentation of possible action on an amendment, the 99-year lease for the children's beach house. This has several parcels to, several items to it and do we. We have, this has a lot, we've had discussion about this in the past, when we discovered that. The children's beach house was actually part of the all, the whole of Lewis Beach in its original zoning. And this came up as they had applied for a permit to expand and improve their. Energy efficiency of their unit over there or their building over there and in order to make the make the changes they needed, they needed to have this. Cleared up so that we could work for, go forward with their plans, Glenn, you've done a lot of work on this, you want to talk a little bit about this?
Thanks, mayor, so there are, there are a total of five lots that the children's beach house has a lease to. The the one that we're talking about, the most relevant one we're talking about this evening is the one where the actual main structure. Sits, the when the original lease to that parcel was done, for one reason or another, it was never recorded with Sussex County. And therefore, it's as if that parcel never was created, there was never a separate tax parcel created for it, so. This in in some ways is housekeeping, as you talked about last last month, we did discover that. As the original parcel was laid out, there are now, there's now the creation of some setback encroachments if you're to go with that same parcel. So the rear line on that parcel has extended toward the bay by about four feet to make sure that those areas that were formerly encroaching are no longer. Encroaching. So there's that parcel and there's the four parcels in front, we've consolidated all those parcels into a single lease extension, so they'll all have the same. Ending point of 21, the year 2136. So there's two documents that terminate the existing leases and then a third document that creates this this new lease to the to the five separate parcels. I know that Wendy Stabler, the attorney representing them, as well as Rich Garrett, the executive director is is online today. If you care to have them comment on it at all, they're they're available. One, one thing I thought maybe they would want to comment on is is there's been an issue raised about. A use of the current facility and rental of that facility and I I've had conversations with. The attorney for Wendy Stabler, the attorney for the beach house, and she's confirmed that, well, that issue is separate from this. Lease issue that, and she's represented to me that they want to be sure that they're in conformity with zoning laws as it relates to use.
Looks like Wendy has joined us now, Wendy, you have any other comments you want to add?
Good evening, members of council, Wendy Stabler here with Saul Ewing, representing the children's beach house. Thank you, Glenn, for giving giving the background, yes, we started down this road as a housekeeping because. As we were going to try to finance with the SEU, the sustainable energy utility, it came to light for. it came to light for the first time that the original leasehold, which actually, there was one that was recorded, one that wasn't recorded, but was never properly, if it was, was never properly indexed. And so a tax parcel number for the main beach house parcel was in fact never created, which is just not something that ever came to light. So obviously, it's a necessary housekeeping to create a parcel that could be pledged in exchange for a mortgage for financing that is really critical for these energy-saving upgrades. As Glenn mentioned, the town also suggested, and we were very much amenable to using this opportunity to consolidate the nineteen fifty-five and the nineteen thirty-eight leaseholds. So that is also what's proposed this evening, and that is to combine those in one lease and then to terminate the prior leases. So it would be extremely helpful from a housekeeping standpoint to accomplish that, and we're much appreciative and hope the council will support that this evening. I do understand that a question was raised about incidental use from time to time of the facility. Rich Garrett is here with me. Obviously, as council knows, this is a community facility, educational zoning classification. The beach house is well aware of that. I've actually been involved for this, with the organization for over twenty years. And of course, they've been around since nineteen thirty-eight. They do many mission-driven activities in support of the community and you know, what they do from time to time is hold fundraisers there. They have in fact had, you know, other catering events there which support their, you know, fundraising to try to raise money to support their core mission. I understand that there was an article and other discussion perhaps. The, the beach house is undertaking a very, very comprehensive strategic visioning process, which they've taken the opportunity during COVID to really self-reflect about, about the future. And one of the items that is being discussed is, you know, ways to, you know, potentially, you know, leverage the facility, but also to support their educational mission primarily. Rich is here with me, but suffice to say, it is, you know, very premature. There are really no, no plans that are concrete at all to that end. And really, we're doing that, which would, has always been done at this site, and it's been done with neighbors being very involved in it, very supportive, and we would never do anything there that would would undermine in any way the value of that relationship of the neighbors and with, with the town of Lewis, which is extremely valued and just want to be a good neighbor. So we're hoping that that conversation will continue, but certainly it's extremely important that we clean this up and be able to consummate the transaction that started a year ago when we, we discovered this small housekeeping matter. I do have Rich Garrett here available to me and available to, to council if you, you all have any specific questions, but as Glenn mentioned, we were hoping to really try to get this, this core matter addressed this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Wendy. Are there questions for either Wendy or, or Rich? Yes, Rob?
I do have this, this question or perhaps an observation. In finalizing your strategic plan, I hope you take into account the the fact that there's a, a line, I'm not sure where it is, between holding fundraising events for, for, to raise funds for the Children's Beach House and running an event venue from which you make money, which you might use for the Children's Beach House. And it's the latter part, I think, that concerned us because we've had to act a few years ago to prevent another structure on Lewis Beach from coming in the venue. So that was, that was the concern that was raised, I think.
Mr. Commissioner, thank, thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. I, I did note that you have an extensive background in the law and are probably in some of these issues more even well-versed than some of the experts in, in, in this particular area. You've raised an excellent point. It is something that is extremely important to the beach house. We have a nonprofit mission and a nonprofit status and things and benefits that go along with that. And there is very high sensitivity to making sure that anything we do there is mission-driven, mission-sensitive, sensitive to our neighbors, consistent with the zoning. All of that is being discussed in, you know, at the highest levels at the beach house. And so we really do appreciate what you've just said. Take it to heart. Want to assure you that all of those things are near and dear to, to the, the board and the trustees who take their role very seriously. And we will, we will abide. So I appreciate those comments and thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think, you know, if you could bring, plan to bring back as you complete your visioning process, what your visioning process for, to share it with us, that would help everyone feel more confident where, where we're headed with this.
Absolutely.
Around that.
And, and Rich is here with me and wanted to make sure we assured the commission that it is our, our absolute commitment to do that.
Great, thank you. Andrew?
Well, maybe Rich can answer this. I just, from a high level, can you speak to what percentage of your mission is dependent on year-on-year sort of revenue versus what's sort of in an endowment for you?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your time. I'm just doing some quick math in my head. We're running at about a one point five million dollar budget per year. And about sixty-five percent of that is raised each year.
And in the past, you've primarily done that through your events with like your beach barbecue and things like that. Is that correct, Rich?
That's correct. Grant writing, fundraising through special events, individual solicitation and corporation, or corporate, corporate solicitation as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the table?
I'll, I'll just make a comment. I, I, I'll echo in terms of just being a good mission overall, and in, in my due diligence in this, I actually reached out to some neighbors who are direct neighbors, like folks who live on Michigan Avenue, et cetera, and they've just reiterated that Children's Beach House have been good neighbors over the years.
Okay, so we have, I think, Wendy, you provided some possible of what I would call wordsmithing changes to the, the document that was, that Glenn had provided. I don't know if the council's had a chance to review that yet or not. It was provided late today. But I think largely, Glenn, would you like to comment as to the difference between the two documents?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. They're largely non-substantive edits, and what I'd ask is that perhaps city council, to the extent you move forward with this, that you would provide in the motion that I would have some leeway to accept those edits that make sense in the context of this lease, license or lease agreement. There was one reference to lot three in my version. It should have been lot five, so I certainly want to include that. So if you give me a little bit of flexibility to incorporate those edits that make sense, I'd appreciate it.
Right, thank you, Glenn. Is there a motion regarding this topic?
I'll make them, okay.
Andrew, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the revision. Sign of termination lease, beach house for parcel. The termination of lease commissioners of Lewis Children's Beach House, one parcel, and the land indentured to Lewis Children's Beach House. So then, are we looking to make an, on I four as well, discussion possibly?
It's a minor subdivision.
That'll be next.
That's a.
I'll make a motion on this piece.
And Andrew, would you accept it as a a, a second with a friendly amendment that we give Glenn the flexibility that he just requested?
Need, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much, Wendy and Rich, for being here tonight to answer questions.
Thank you.
Then moving on to item I four is discussion of possible action regarding a minor subdivision of the city of Lewis for the Children, Children's Beach House located at eighteen hundred Bay Avenue, Sussex County Tax Map three, thirty-five, dash four point two zero, dash one point zero, zero. This is based upon the survey that's we have. And I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Janelle, is there anything you'd like to talk about in terms of minor subdivision here?
I would just note that the revised plan addresses all the, the setback issues, and the planning commission did recommend approval of the minor subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion regarding the subdivision?
I'll move approval.
I have a question.
Well, yeah, we have a motion on the floor. Let's either get a second, then we can have questions.
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead, Tim. What's your question?
Yeah, I apologize. I was out of order there. Yeah, my question is, is this property in, in the excellent recharge area?
It is not.
It is not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there other questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion, motion carries. Thank you very much. And again, Wendy and Rich, thank you for being here tonight. Look forward to you getting your energy efficiency activities underway.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then moving on to item I five, it's presentation of possible action of the city manager's recommendation of candidates for city council based upon their qualifications. Rob, you said you were going to recuse on this, and this is a note from, a memo from Anne Marie saying that she does certify the following candidates. Candidates have filed for the positions of councilperson and have met the necessary criteria. Therefore, an election will be held on Saturday, May eighth, as we have previously noted. The councilperson candidates are Carolyn Jones, Rob Morgan, and Khalil Saliba. Anne Marie, thank you for doing that. I think we just need a motion to accept the recommendation from the city managers.
Can I make that motion?
I think you can. I think you've been waiting all night to do it, so go ahead.
No, I'm just kidding. Good luck to all the candidates, and I would move that we accept the certified list of candidates.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Rob, you can come back.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Moving on to I six, it's presentation of possible action regarding waivers of the lands of Verden, a major, major subdivision to be located off of King's Highway, Sussex County Tax Map three, thirty-five point eight, dash eight, excuse me, dash eight point one five, dash forty-one, zero, zero, lands of burden waiver request. We've had a lot of discussion over several years here regarding the possible subdivision of this. This has been through the planning, the planning department and the planning commission, and they have recommended approval of this. And there are several things here to discuss regarding that. Janelle, you want to talk to us a little bit about this?
I would be happy to. As part of the major subdivision, there are a number of waivers that the applicant had request, has requested as part of the subdivision. And you'll note in the report that the, I did provide the planning commission's recommendation, and I also provided the draft minutes from the planning commission meeting in which they did recommend approval of all of these, and they granted preliminary consent for the major subdivision. So the first item is the street width and the right-of-way. The standard street width is thirty-two feet. The code does allow for a reduction in the street width to go down to twenty-four feet based on average daily trips of being less than five hundred. I believe when they did the, the average daily trips, it was, it was under fifty, fifty or less. So they're asking for a twenty-four foot wide road, and the right-of-way is proposed from fifty feet to forty feet. There was a lot of discussion on this one. So the planning commission did recommend approval. However, they asked that there was concern about off-street parking. So it's a really long motion, and I'm pretty sure I got it almost correct, and Glenn can tell me if I didn't. But the planning commission recommended approval of the waiver to allow for the reduction of the street width to twenty-four feet and the right-of-way of forty feet. So as long as there's a legal mechanism to allow for the off-street parking in the grass, the city's grass, right-of-way, that's created between the applicant's attorney and, and the mayor and Glenn prior to mayor council, and that is for final subdivision, that that agreement needs to be worked out. It's not for tonight. It's for the final subdivision. Because they're still, they just were granted preliminary consent, and then if they cannot work out off-street parking with the grass area that the street be twenty-eight feet. So that was the recommendation for that, but the right-of-way could still go down to twenty, to forty feet. The second one is for streetlights. And again, let me back up. We're talking about a five-lot subdivision. Total five lots. The reason it's a, it's a major subdivision is because it's five lots and they're creating a new road to serve off of the five lots. So they did ask away from the streetlights. The planning commission did recommend approval of that. However, they did require that instead of streetlights, photocell lamp posts shall be installed at the end of each driveway to provide illumination for the driveways and a little bit of the road. The next one is for curbing. They did request a waiver for curving, from curbing, because what they're looking to do is doing open drainage along the road. So providing curbing would hinder the, the drainage of the road that they had gotten approval from the Conservation District to do. So the planning commission did recommend approval of the elimination of curbing along the proposed road. And then the final one is sidewalks. And there was a lot of discussion regarding the waiver of sidewalks, but the planning commission did recommend approval of the elimination of sidewalks along this road. Again, based on a number of, there's a couple of streets that have been approved recently. Length of the road, the location of the, the bike path and other things, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Janelle. Are there questions from the table?
Janelle, there was a concern raised about the emergency vehicle turnaround. How is that addressed?
That will be addressed as part of the subdivision, and they will get approval from the offices of state fire marshal to ensure there's adequate turnaround. Based on their initial design, they believe they are meeting the requirements, but that will be addressed as part of the subdivision approval. And that will be addressed prior to it coming back before the mayor and council for public hearing and final consideration.
And, and my other question at this point is about parking. Twenty-four foot street width doesn't allow any parking on the pavement on the side, so they were suggesting that there be some arrangement for parking on the grass. And if you have a fifty-foot right-of-way, there's lots of room to park on the grass. If you have less, there's less. What is your, what is your feeling on that?
From the planning perspective, based on the driveways, the length of the driveways, it, and based on the size of the subdivision, that the size of the, the road seems to be appropriate. As there's a lot of parking that would be permitted in the driveways. I think I mentioned at the planning commission meeting that it appears that each driveway would allow at least four vehicles in the driveway, and that's not including a garage.
Would allow at least what again, please?
Four vehicles.
Four vehicles plus whatever fits in the garage. Would they be in line, or would they have to be stacked and the one closest to the street be moved before they could?
There would, there'd probably be a little bit of stacking, but I think about it as, you know, how, how friends come over to your house. Somebody's going to block somebody in for something. So, and the applicant did reference that typically this is for, the intent for the subdivision is for family. I'm just referencing what was, what was stated at the, the meeting, that they could potentially share some extra parking if needed. But yes, based on the the use, the number of lots that the twenty-four foot wide width could be appropriate for this this development.
Yeah, and planning commission.
A little bit about the parking, the on-street parking.
So.
I want to bring Charlie in. Is that okay, Mayor?
Sure, you can bring Charlie in. One comment I would have about the on-street, on the grass parking is there needs to be some recognition about what kind of landscaping might be done in the city's right of way. So that if you're going to designate that that grass area within the city's right of way, you can't be planting trees in it and and large shrubbery that would prohibit the use of the off the grassy areas. And I guess I assume that would be addressed by the planning commission at the time of a final approval, but that is a concern when you talk about using grassy area for parking.
The other piece is is what I want Charlie to address, and that has to do with the drainage component. So and this is something that will definitely have to be evaluated in the next phase. So Charlie, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I just think that when the developers working with the city with regard to this agreement about all-street parking and whether to go to twenty-eight feet width width road, that the thing to realize is is that the developer is going to try to put porous asphalt pavement in for this main seblane road that's going in the the twenty-four foot proposed width, which is great, but their preliminary grading plan also has one foot fifteen inch deep swales on either side of the road. And I'm not thrilled with the idea of trying to encourage people to park on the grassy area, knowing that they're part of the drainage system.
Right.
So I think that needs to be part of the consideration as we work through it during the council approval phase.
You know, the
The idea of going to twenty-eight feet presents a problem because the developer's gotten some special approval from Deldat for their entrance plan where they don't have to do a full-blown entrance. If you go to twenty-eight feet, they will be required to do way more at that entrance, so that's something else to be to think about as well.
What do you mean by way more, Charlie? Quantify that, please.
It would have to be wider. There might be some shoulder requirements that are different from what they have in the plan right now. Some other right-of-way width extensions. I'm not sure of all the all the requirements because they didn't have to do that, but if they go to twenty feet, they might have to.
It would also impact their approval from the Sussex Conservation District because they did get a different approval based on the square footage of the proposed road and the width of the road for their stormwater management with the drainage.
You mean, and so the ditch line or the gully that Charlie described actually meets the Sussex County? What is the water conservation? Is that correct? Is that the right term, the right?
The Sussex Conservation District.
Thank you. Having the ditch line run parallel to the paved surface meets their their standards. Is that correct?
Where they made, where they made their big improvement on this project is when they moved from just regular asphalt pavement to the porous asphalt.
The porous asphalt, right?
In terms of storm.
Yeah.
I wonder how much.
Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Go ahead. Finish your question.
Okay, thank you. My question is, I'm I'm concerned about this notion that we would accommodate parking by suggesting that cars be parked on a grass area. And do I understand correctly, Janelle, from your description, that that area that would be designated for parking that would be grass would be in the city, within the city's forty-foot right of way? Is that correct? Or would it extend into the private property as well?
No, the proposal was to work with everything within the forty-foot right of way. Again, this is the recommendation from the planning commission. You have concerns about allowing parking on in the grass. You don't have to accept their recommendation.
Right.
That's just something, it's something they were, they were, they, they didn't have a problem with the twenty-four foot wide road. They were just concerned about extra off-street parking, so they wanted to address, how do we address off-street parking? Because at twenty-four feet wide, it does not allow for on-street parking on on any side. So they just wanted to see if there was a way to provide some on-street parking in some type of grass area. Maybe not in the ditch area, if depending on where that goes, and that was going to be worked out between the attorneys. And of course, in consultation with the engineers to make sure there's there aren't any issues if you if you want to continue with that.
I, well, I am concerned about it, and in preparation for attending this meeting, I did some research, and unfortunately, I left my notes. I didn't bring them with me, but it seems to me that there is a, somewhere embedded in our code, there is a language that addresses this idea of not allowing parking in in yards, in grassy areas. So I would just encourage you and anyone else involved in this to make sure that there's been a thorough review of the code to make sure that we are not creating a special exception here.
Understood.
It occurs on Lewis Beach, right?
The other question I have is.
Yes.
Say what?
I said it occurs on Lewis Beach, and I mean, the other thing is if you don't have curbs, the only thing that's going to prevent it is Chief Spelling and his team. I mean.
Yeah, that's that's quite true, Andrew. That's quite true.
Well, I'm not.
The other, the other question. Go ahead. Go ahead, Rob.
I just wanted to follow up on that point. Isn't another thing that prevents parking on the grass the swell? I mean, not all cars can traverse a swell without gutting their undercarriage. So would the swell go on both sides of the road as currently designed?
As currently designed, it is proposed to be go on both sides of the road. I think the intent was to find areas, if we could find some areas that it would not impact, the swell wouldn't be as deep or other areas where maybe there there isn't a swell all the way around to try and alleviate, to find some place off-street parking. Because again, the planning commission's entire concern was about off-street parking, while noting that there's, based on the driveways, there is sufficient, I mean, the code meets, the the proposed driveways meet the current code requirement of two parking spaces per house, and based on the driveway and the width of the driveways, it exceeds the required number of parking spaces. So this would just be additional parking for on the street.
Tom Panetta's motion at the planning commission was to approve the twenty-four foot width if the attorneys reached an agreement before our vote tonight.
No, it's, no, that is for the final subdivision, is not for the consideration of the waiver. So the final vote would be for final subdivision approval by the mayor and city council, not as part of a waiver request.
I may have misread his motion, though, but I thought the motion, let me find it.
It's on page five of.
And again, we're talking about draft draft minutes, so they have not been reviewed by the planning commission, so if there's something missing, we will have to address that.
He made.
Planning.
Motion he made was to recommend to mayor and city council to grant the waiver with a twenty-four foot street width if the legal mechanisms allow for pavement parking in the city's grassy right of way is agreed upon by the attorneys before the mayor and city council votes.
And the, again, the intent for that was for the final subdivision plan, not for the consideration of the waiver. I understand how you're reading it, but you're reading draft minutes that have not been approved nor approved.
Well, Janelle, I can only go on what you linked to us to.
Understood.
Us to is a is a motion which was passed that we wouldn't be asked to vote until that legal agreement was reached.
Right. Can I jump in here a second? I want to, I don't know how many people actually listen to. The people on council were actually on this thing, and I'm not asking for show of hands, but the whole discussion of the parking was quite convoluted. And I think a masterful job actually has been done here to try to capture what the the various things that the planning mission members were were struggling with. I, I, I mean, I guess I I understand Rob's concern based on the way these minutes, these draft minutes are written. But but let me ask a different question. First, this is for you, Glenn. To answer what I think is Rob's concern, can we, can we defer the waiver question until later in the development process? That's number one. And then this is a question for Janelle, which is related, I think, to this whole discussion, which is if the, as we know from what we've got here on Tom Panetta's motion, it says the alternative would be a pavement of twenty-eight feet. Presumably also pervious pavement. But but the extra four feet would allow for parking on on the east side of this, what is a very short road. If if is that, if if you know, Janelle, is that alternative, would that alternative way of approaching the pavement also be acceptable to the Sussex County Conservation District, or do we not have an answer on that?
We do not have an answer because that was something that was brought up during the meeting, so that has not been designed nor reviewed by anyone.
Yeah, because I will say one thing that was discussed in the overall, if I remember correctly, in the overall context of this proposed subdivision, and it's just a major subdivision by this much, which is why there are all these requirements, was what was that, the applicant made the representation that they would be able to keep all of the stormwater on site. And is that, you're not in your head, Janelle, so I do remember that correctly, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and I think that, I mean, just looking at the overall development, I think that's something that that we on council want to do everything we can to ensure happens, because anything that that doesn't add more stormwater to the overall storm, overtaxed stormwater situation, I think is important. So I I only bring that up in the context of the parking discussion because I think anytime you have pavement, obviously you have stormwater and all that sort of thing. So I think, so now I'm going to throw my initial question over to Glenn, who has unmuted himself in preparation for this moment, which is can we, given these unknowns about the stormwater, about the Sussex Confirmation District, about what was actually, what what might have been nuances in Tom Panetta's motion, can we defer the waiver question to a later time?
Yes, you can certainly defer it to a later time, and you you have the authority to to deny the waiver request, so you certainly have the authority to revisit it some later time if you'd like. So yes, I think you can defer it. The the thing that I think is kind of interesting about this question about the off-street parking in the right of way is that, you know, you always have the power to govern the right of way. It's going to be a private street designer standard, but we initially sort of, I'm sorry, it's going to be a public.
Street.
So so again, it's
That's the problem.
But it's your right of way. It's my, it's my point. It's your right of way. If somebody decides to plant something in your right of way or somehow encumber it, you always have the authority to to remove it and have your right of way available for parking.
We know all about that one.
Yeah, we do, don't we, Rob?
Much harder to exercise in in practice, but this is an instance where you could perhaps create a restrictive covenant where the owners can enforce the covenant against each other not to encumber the right of way. We give the city the power to enforce that restrictive covenant as well. So there are legal mechanisms to do it. I think there are also concerns like what Charlie raised, though, about do you want off-street parking in the right of way? Recall, as Janelle said, the the request from the applicant was simply to have a narrower road width. The planning commission suggested the off-street parking requirement, which might be a great requirement, but in the context of Charlie's comments, you know, you could go a different direction. I just, that's up to you, but yes, you can defer, you can certainly defer this.
We do have the benefit of Tom Panetta being here tonight. Perhaps he could clarify what his what his intent was with his motion. So Tom, you've been on, you've been brought into the the platform here, and you've been unmuted. Do you want to comment on what your intent was with this motion?
Just just quickly, the context of this was what happens during holiday events, and where does the overflow parking go? And in the larger context is that there is no public streets like there is in the rest of town nearby, Seblane. So it's not like it can flow over to other streets, and that was where the discussion on where do you put overflow parking when everyone's there for Christmas or Thanksgiving or Fourth of July? The, I think the motion as is in the minutes there, while they have not been approved by LPC yet, are exactly what you'll see in the transcript of the meeting, which was we were, we were okay with either widening the road, and if there was a means of putting bump outs or something at the end so it didn't interfere with King's Highway, or alternatively allowing parking on the grass. But you do have five houses there, and the need for additional parking is is, I think, important, and the idea that you're going to have four cars or five cars backed up in the driveway, we all know that doesn't work. So I think the words as written in the motion are exactly what the vote showed.
Okay.
And there was a lot of discussion on it.
Yes, there was. I remember that. Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you for the time. Yeah.
It is, so it is, it does reflect the motion, but was the intent before the waiver or before final plan?
Well, I, the intent was is that we were making a motion on the waiver, which was going to go to city council. So the motion is about approving or denying the waiver. Yes, this has to come back to us for subdivision plans, but no, the motion was on the waiver. I mean, we voted on every waiver individually.
Yes, you did. Okay, thanks, Tom.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have a question with Charlie. Charlie, you made a comment about that if it went to twenty-eight feet, there there would be significantly greater concern on the part of Deldat. The the entrance to this subdivision right now has a very broad depressed curb entrance. It's probably thirty-five feet. How would it differ? What would be happening? What would, what else would Deldat require?
This doesn't meet the entrance requirements for what a typical entrance for a subdivision would require. So I I can't tell you exactly what the details would be, but it would be wider. The radiuses would be larger, the the disruption just to to King's Highway would be greater. They might require a full curb and gutter. You know, there'd be other things as well, like Cher's chiming in on my phone here about new sidewalk as well, so. I mean, it's just going to be a lot more work there. I know they got some some relieved of a lot of the requirements that are typically administered on an entrance like that.
I just note that when they, when the sidewalk and curb and gutter was installed there, it's a very large section of depressed curb. You know, I just was curious what else Deldat might require, if you had any clarification on it. Thank you. Yes, Tim, you're muted.
Don't want to be muted. Question for you, Ted, and then I have a question about the plan here. The depression that you described in the. The depression that you described in the, I think you said in the curb line, is that like a, in effect, a an anticipation of a curb cut? Is it that type of?
It would be like a dirt, like, like a driveway cut, but.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. What is our, what is our, our policy or about? If I understand correctly, if all the stormwater is going to be managed on site and yes, these ditches or swales, I believe Charlie called them, on either side or both each side of the drive, what the road are are located within the right of way, whose responsibility is it to manage those swales? In other words, is this, is this a, does this become a city maintenance issue? A governmental maintenance issue, or is this an HOA issue?
If it's a swell in the right of way, I would think it would be a BPW maintenance issue because of the stormwater function of BPW.
Right. Right. And are they party to this yet?
They have done an initial review and they will get more details once they move for, towards final design and approval process. And again, we're just talking about the four waivers, about the waivers.
Okay, and this, but and deciding, can I talk about the swell, Janelle? Is that, is that fair, is that a fair topic?
Depending on how it's in relation to the street right of way and road width, go for it.
Okay, thank you.
The swell is also relevant to the curbing waiver, so I think.
That's probably part of the dream.
Right, okay. The, with respect to the swell, do we have? I don't know, this thing really, this is a real challenge for me. I'm going to hold my question and I'll come back to it in a minute. Go ahead.
Can I ask a related question? I was just thinking about swales that I've seen around the city. And I, you know, I think there's some over like on University Drive and I don't know. You know, that, that, it's not like there's water in them all the time. It's just when there's dirt, right? So it goes into the ground. But what I don't know, I just don't know whether the ones I'm thinking of over there are within the city right of way or are on the, the property. But I guess the only reason I bring it up is I don't know the answer to the question as to, I don't think anybody maintains them. I think they just get wet and the water goes down and that's that. But, and those are no more than, I think Janelle said, or, or Charlie said that these would be about a foot deep. And I'm, I'm thinking that's about the same over there. But again, I haven't measured it. I'm just trying to think of situations around the city where this might exist. But I guess I only bring this up to say, I don't know that it's ever been a maintenance issue. In the sense that whether it's on private property or it's part of the city's potential right of way. I, I don't know that I've ever seen a problem. That doesn't mean a problem couldn't exist. But I was just offer that as a, what you know, at least notionally is a similar existing situation that does seem to work well for these, for handling stormwater. But again, I don't know whose property it on, it just seems to work without any particular maintenance.
Oh, the swales. I will tell you that swales in Pilot Town Park on University and Reddington Drive all drain to a stormwater management system that drains into the canal.
Exactly.
Okay, I didn't know that. That's, that's.
Catch faces that go into, directly into the canal.
So that's, I did not realize that. So that's good to know. So here's a question then, is what is the, what is the design feature for these swales? For this? I mean, are they going to, they obviously aren't going to drain off the property if they're going to keep all the stormwater on the property.
Correct. You know, I think Glenn could add as an alternative here that we could, you know, defer act decision on the, on the width, you know, if we wish, on the street width.
I'll just, this is Charlie. I'll just say that, you know, the width of it doesn't bother me. The reduced right of way doesn't bother me. It's just this sort of back and forth between where the off-site parking and this, and the fact that they're shown as swales now as, you know, additional stormwater management. And I don't believe that those swales have been completely designed yet. And they, and they weren't, wouldn't be until the council approval phase. It may end up that they are some sort of biofiltration system that keep, does a better job of keeping all the stormwater on the site, not letting it get out to, you know, some to some drainage area on King's Highway or something like that. So I do feel like between myself, Glenn, the developers, engineer, we, we could probably work this out, but it's a, it's a little tricky trying to get the off, you know, on-street parking and using those swales for part of this drainage system.
Charlie, does this?
And Charlie, go ahead.
Does this?
Go ahead, Rob.
Can the swell be far enough from the edge of the pavement? That it would allow, let's say, a gravel surface to park on?
You know what? I really don't think so, Rob, because it's 12 feet wide now. If if you put even the four feet that we were talking about from 24 to 28, that makes that swell area eight feet wide and a foot, foot and a half deep. That's, you're getting kind of steep on the side. I mean, it would probably work, but it would be a little bit of a steeper swell side. Now it's kind of gentle slope. I think it would be, you know, you hardly notice them, but you'd see a little swell there.
So it seems to be, maybe I'm seeing this wrong, but it seems to be a choice between, if you want, if you want to provide enough parking, you either have a wider road or you have no swell.
Well, I was hoping to have to go that black and white.
Or you could potentially require additional on-street parking. I mean, off-street parking for the properties.
And how would you accomplish that? What's, how would you accomplish that?
The driveways have to be longer or wider to provide additional on-street, off-street parking spaces.
Or parking.
Those lots are wide enough to accommodate a longer driveway and also the setbacks that the city requires?
Well, again, you can't do wider than 20 feet, but the length should be fine.
I'm talking about the length. I'm talking about the length.
Yeah, depending on where they place the house, the length can be increased because again, the driveway can be in, will of course be in the setback. So it's just where, how long they, they, if they max out at 20 feet wide and you make it, you know.
Right, I understand how that works.
And you make it, you know, 40 or 50 feet, you get multiple cars in the parking space. So there's a third option if you, if you want to address the on-street parking with additional off-street parking requirements to like, say, you have, they have to provide three off-street parking spaces instead of the two that required, or four. Am I still on good legal standing, Glenn? As a minor, as a major subdivision that an additional condition for a waiver?
You can attach conditions to an approval that relate to health, safety or welfare concerns. So the planning commission has identified a concern that, that there should be more parking throughout the development somehow. I suspect the reasonable condition would be to require additional off-street parking on, on the ones.
Well, that, I think the conditions come at the final approval.
That's right.
Just, can I just, the, the, it was something that Tom Panetta said was, was very interesting is he was, he said that the planning commission's principal concern here was holiday parking, you know, the Christmas, Fourth of July issue. The fact of the matter is that I suspect that overflow parking is going to come right over to debris circle, which is not very far away from where this is.
That's right.
And, and there is a sidewalk that gets you to the, the bike trail that gets you to a safe safe crossing. So as a practical matter, if the concern here is a couple of times a year when there may be inadequate that there's a ready and safe outlet for public parking for this thing. But, but what I would suggest is, we've talked about a lot of things and we, I think we're missing, at least I feel we're missing a lot of information. So my suggestion would be that we defer on the street width and the curbing, since those go hand in hand. And until we have more information and move on to lighting and sidewalks, which we haven't even started, haven't even hit on yet.
I like that idea.
I, I, we, we've talked about that and Glenn provided us that vehicle in his earlier comments. I think it's a good idea.
We're going to make a motion to defer on those two and then we can go forward.
We could go ahead and defer on those two.
Do we need a motion or we just defer?
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and have the discussion about the other items and try to deal with all of them at one time rather than fragmenting this into various motions?
That makes a lot of sense.
Okay, so I think we want to talk about lighting and we and, you know, the proposal there is, as Janelle has described, that they would, they would eliminate street lighting, but they would require a lamp post at the end of each driveway, which would be on a photo cell. Given the size of this development, comments from anyone?
I, I think it's a sensible recommendation from the planning commission and I would just note that there was a, some unhappiness when the library went in with its parking, or its lighting rather. So this is, this is five driveways. I don't, I don't think overhead lighting is needed. I thought the photo cell was a nice touch.
Okay. I think that, any other comments from anybody? The curbing, we're going to defer on. And sidewalks.
I think the sidewalks are a little bit tied to street widths too.
And curbing.
Say again?
And the curbing. I think sidewalks are tied to curbing as well.
Right.
If you don't have curbing, then you're probably not going to have sidewalks.
Right.
I agree.
So does that mean we're going to defer on sidewalks, curbing and street width?
Well, if they're all interrelated, I think we need, we just need more information on.
I think we need to see how the, how the, how the, that lays out.
Right.
Andrew, do you have a comment? What you're, you're thinking there? Okay, great. Tim, did you have a further comment?
No, thank you.
There in an effort to, to try to do a little bit more, I'm not quite clear why sidewalks are so related to curbing. Can't we say you don't have to have sidewalks, but you might have to have curbing?
You could. But what are you going to do? Just put a sidewalk in without any curb? And then what are you going to do with the, if you have swales? Are you going to, are you going to have a pitch to the sidewalk so the water could run over the swell? Over the sidewalk if that, if you decide you want sidewalks in there?
It's the other way around. I'm thinking that we could go ahead and accept the planning commission's recommendation to waive the requirement of sidewalks.
Regardless of what they want on curbing.
Yeah, I, I agree with Rob, particularly given the rationale that was articulated by the planning commission. Which to do with proximity of other sidewalks and, and available.
You're not going to have any heavy traffic on this, on this small street. All right, so then we're back to waiving the, the first two, the two waivers regarding street lights and sidewalks and then deferring on the curbing and street width. Is that where we are?
Charlie has his hand up.
Who does?
Charlie.
Okay, Charlie, I didn't see that. Charlie?
I just, maybe just add a couple of other things that if, if you put curb into the picture, that the purpose of curb is to channel runoff and the runoff would have to go somewhere. So it kind of, it is counter to the idea of trying to keep it on site. Just keep that in mind. The other part of it, but maybe it's a question for Janelle. I, I just don't know where we are in the process. Are they moving into council approval, like full construction document preparation now?
They're getting, they're starting to work on that, yes.
Yeah, because they're not going to know what to do in their design without the answer. Some of these.
Correct.
I feel like.
Yeah, because if they don't know to what to do about, because they're proposing no curbing because they want to do open swell to allow for the drainage to go into the, to the, to the swell and back into the ground, which is why they've done that. And not knowing about that, not knowing about whether or not they have to do curbing, sidewalk, streetlights are impacts how they move forward with, with design, construction design. But that's up to council to decide.
What is your feeling about waiving the curbing requirement?
I, I, I think what we've got here.
It was my understanding.
Well, all I was going to say is we could, we could move this forward by saying that the, the developer can look at either of the two, if, if we're willing, if we think it's appropriate. We could go forward with the two alternatives. But I think that the, the question we've got here is will the swell be on, in the city's right of way or will it be on private property? And that's, that's a reasonable discussion. And, and that, you know, I, I don't know that they're, that it's appropriate for them to be planning in the city's right of way for their, for their stormwater without making that express. I mean, I, I appreciate, look, we're either going to have, we're probably going to have, my guess is at the end of the day, we're going to have a slightly wider street than what they're talking about with that one side of the street, of the street parking. And that's probably going to be where it is. But without knowing whether that's going to be acceptable to the Sussex County Conservation District or how that affects the stormwater, I, I appreciate the concerns about the developer not knowing exactly what their guidance is, but we don't have enough information to say one way or the other. I mean, remember they're, they're, they're coming in for waivers from what's ordinarily required and we're trying very hard to work with them. I mean, everybody, I think, wants this to be appropriate. We just have to make sure that it, it's functional.
I think what we're concerned about is what happens with, when it's all done? Where, where does this stormwater go? I mean, we've, we've been told it could be managed on the property, but you know, where does it go? How does it get, how does it get dealt with?
Isn't it partly driven by whether you're going to permit or whether you're going to require off-street parking in the grassy area or not? If you think that's an important requirement, then I think you should give that direction perhaps tonight, that if you, if you're going to grant the waiver, it's going to come with an off-street parking requirement. And that can help, I think, them look at the other issues and whether Sussex Conservation District is going to allow for the stormwater management as it's currently designed, or they're going to require something different. But if you don't think that off-street parking in the grassy area should be a requirement, then maybe, you know, there's, there's another direction you can go to give, to give some guidance. But I think it sort of starts, I think it kind of pivots on whether you want the off-street parking or not.
Yeah, I mean, I'll tell, I'm not particularly offended by the idea of of off-street parking in a five-house development where the planning commission's concern was a couple of you know, festive days a year. You know, we, as I think Andrew noted, we have, we do have parking in grassy areas of the city right of way down the beach. So it's not unprecedented.
Other comments?
So I, I made the same comment earlier as Bonnie just did. I think it's my understanding that they sort of need these waivers to even make the property feasible. Is that not the case? Or otherwise, why are we even considering the waivers?
Well, I think that they have two options. They could do the 28 feet or they could do the 24 feet. That's the only, that's the variance there.
Well, actually, I don't know if we know about the 28 feet, but I, I mean, we've gotten requests for waivers lots of times that it had nothing to do with whether or not the development was feasible. I mean, for example, those couple of houses down on the corner of Anglers and what was that, Market Street?
East Market.
Yeah, they requested all kinds of waivers and, and we said okay to some and we said no to others and you know, it went forward.
Right. There was a request for waiver for sidewalk that we didn't approve.
Sidewalk and I think lighting and I think there was something else. Yeah.
Tim, you had a question?
No, I don't think so. It, it doesn't make any difference now. No, thanks.
So are we okay, are, are we okay with the idea of allowing the parking in the grass area? I think that's what it comes down to.
I don't, I don't know how we can, how we can approve that without knowing the engineered piece of that, of that swale. Go ahead.
Sorry, I also think that there's a, another way to look at it. Is there a need, as councilperson Osler said, to provide on-street parking for several times a year or not? Is, do you need the on-street parking or do you think there's sufficient off-street parking? Which if you believe there's no need for on-street parking and you believe and want to require additional off-street parking or believe there's additional off-street parking, adequate off-street parking, then you don't have to worry about parking in the grass. Does that help alleviate some confusion? Because I know we keep going down. It's like, because then it's whether or not is it okay to have a 24-foot wide road or not? And then you don't have to get into the 20, 28-foot wide if you believe there's no need for on-street parking. Because that's where that came from, is, is there a need for on-street parking? Yes or no? If there is, then we, we have to figure it out. If you don't, then you can consider the 24-foot wide road. Or if you do, but want to add additional off-street parking requirements. Because as was noted, that it might just be for like three times a year, that you might have additional parking.
That, that, yeah, I mean, I think there is one middle ground, which is could do. Is there a need for on-street parking, as Tom Panetta said, only at certain days of the year?
We don't know. We don't know that.
I know we don't. I know we don't. But what Janelle is saying is, you know, what is it, what, what is a rational response to five houses? You know, can we sit here and say, well, you know, it's, I don't know, there might be, they might need to park, have, have guests who can't get in the driveway park in the grassy area. Between Memorial Day and Labor Day, you know, but no, but then not allow it any other time. I, I don't know. I mean, but I think you know, we, I think we can make a, a reasonable guess.
You can make a reasonable assumption here. And the other thing is that there is no on-street parking allowed on, on, on King's Highway. You're absolutely, you're absolutely correct that where people are going to park is in debris circle, the first entrance.
But I, I would throw one thing in there. I mean, since these are 10,004 of them, four of the five are 10,000 plus square foot lots.
Right.
You can put a large dwelling on there if you want to.
Yep.
If we were to have a situation where we end up with four large houses that all of a sudden become Airbnb's, that's a different kettle of fish.
That's right. That's correct. That's right.
Uh, I have a question for Charlie.
In no way suggesting that's what the, that's what the burdens have in mind. I'm just saying that's, you know, that's.
It could happen. Yeah.
Out there, yeah.
It's about capacity. Charlie, I have a question for you. In your discussions with I guess the burdens or their representatives, the swales that are, have been discussed, are they, do they run the entire length of, of this, the road?
Yes, pretty much. It gets a little busy towards the back end of it where they kind of stop on one side, but I would say probably 80% of the road has swales on either side.
And, and Charlie, speaking about the swales, are these the kind of swales that are used in this, in the county where they actually hold water until they dissipate? Or are they part of a system that leads to, you know, a system or some other catch basin that would take water away?
I, they, they're planning to infiltrate the swales. But you know, it's just a preliminary plan that we've seen. We haven't seen the full-blown stormwater management. The good thing is they have porous asphalt on the road, so that's going to reduce that runoff. But I'd like to have a little insurance policy with the swales. And I know that right now they're infiltrating them, so.
And you know, if the, this is really in the weeds at this point in time probably, but I'm not sure when, when this comes into the discussion. As far as runoff from roofs, you know, from gutters and so forth. I, the practice in the area now is that that is captured and moved towards stormwater, water management ponds. What would the practice, what should we expect in this community of five houses?
I don't think that they're planning on getting it out to those swales. Do you remember, Janelle?
No, they were going to infiltrate directly into the sites and that is, that is part of the subdivision process. Not part of the waivers for discussion. They were going to handle that individually on-site and they had worked out that, out with the, the conservation district.
Okay, but that, it does relate to as far as the capacity and the size of the soils. If they were accommodating runoff from rooftops, they would have to be sized or scaled accordingly. Yeah.
The swales were designed, my understanding, for the road them, itself.
Okay.
We have not seen the, the complete drawings because again, they don't know what to do without.
Right.
Which is why we're here tonight to figure out how do we move forward so they can figure out how to move forward.
Correct. And, and I just. Go ahead. So I, because I've noticed that none of the applicants were on our attendees list, I did reach out to Vince Robertson via text, their attorney. And he's now monitoring the meeting and he has asked me to defer to, to May and they'll get more information from Sussex Conservation District and be able to provide you with more if that's agreeable to, to council.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you. Good.
So shall we just defer on the whole thing or do you want to go ahead and act on what we've got done?
Uh, I think the only thing we are, we can act on at this point is the sidewalks. I'm, I'm sorry, is the lighting.
Well, we could act on lighting and sidewalks probably.
Grant the waiver on sidewalks and lighting.
And, and on the other two.
Yeah. Okay. So that, okay, so your motion then, Rob, is to, to defer on the sidewalks or the street, the parking and the, and the curbing. But to act, go ahead and approve the streetlights and the sidewalk. Waiver. Okay? And Bonnie's second.
Yeah, streetlights waiver as recommended by the planning commission. Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this will come back up in May.
And I won't be here in May.
Well. He can bring us more information, we'll put it on the 26th of April.
I think I said to Feral to May. Can I just take one second to say, the, the design that the burdens have come up with is actually quite nice. And I do look forward to, to, to this going forward. We just, I think the stick, the real issues are the stormwater and the parking and and we'll, we'll get it worked out.
We will get it worked out. I think we're very close at this point, but.
To that point, I'd like to make a comment that on several of these, we have made compromises and concessions and one of them being an annexation that we're considering. And there's other properties in, in this town that frankly haven't been given the same consideration.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, so I think we move on to item I seven. Uh, which is presentation of possible action orders to amend the Lewis Municipal Code, chapter 167 Streets and Sidewalks, Article Two, Maintenance and Repair. This is an item we've talked about a lot. Anne Marie or Janelle, you want to talk a little bit about this?
This is the parting gift for Deputy Mayor Osler. Who has lamented for many years that the utility cuts in our, in our streets and the patching that is done on them have added to our, our street maintenance costs. So, um, we have a section in the code that deals with this, but we didn't have a, a good procedure for applying it. And as we started to work with Charlie to develop that procedure, it, you know, we realized that there's quite a bit of language in the, in the code that needed to be updated. And the, the drawings, the exhibits on, you know, how, how we do our patches and, and the the various details also needed to be updated. So what we've done here is, you know, put forward something that fills the, the gaps that exist and that we are prepared to move forward with a system for permitting, having either an escrow or a bond to address. You know, i- if you pull a permit to cut the street, then you, you have to give us a $2,500 either a, a bond or a cash escrow and then we hold it. And that way, if you don't do it, if you don't do the repair properly, we can, we can pull on that to, to do it correctly. You know, it also would make sure that we're inspecting them as they happen. Right now, you know, people pay $25 for a curb cut or a, a street cut permit. And there's no real inspection. So we're not, we're not, well, frankly, we're not making sure that it's done correctly and we're left with the, the street as it is resulting from that. So, so this would fill that gap. Charlie really did all the heavy lifting on this, so I don't know. Charlie, if you want to add anything?
No, I don't have a whole, whole lot to add. It did give us an opportunity to update the details, which was a really good things. Good thing. We added some streets that required traffic control, some of our more heavily traveled roads. And as Anne Marie mentioned, it just updated the whole language in terms of the permitting and the actual process of doing the work.
And the, how are the roads chosen that are listed in 167 dash four?
Um, again, a- as Charlie said, they are, there are have more heavily traveled roads that, that see more traffic. They're not the internal subdivision streets.
Okay. Yeah, most of many, many of them are actually state maintained roads at this point.
Well.
I don't see that.
They're all, they're all city maintained roads, but Rob, we had, when we did the street schedule work, inventory and maintenance schedule work all last year, we, we had identified what we called local truck streets, which were the ones that had more have heavily car traffic and truck traffic than the other streets inside the city. And those are the ones that we thought would require the, the more strict traffic control.
Thanks.
Yeah, you might want to add debris circle to that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a major crossover.
The school system particularly.
Yeah, and just quickly, the reason that this is important is over the years, there's been a lot of discussion about how we need to repave or either build an overlay or otherwise street because, because the curb cuts have gotten to the point where when you go on the streets, you hit that thump repeatedly. And so it, it is, it shifted a great many costs to taxpayers of Lewis that could be, could be eliminated or at least reduced if we were more vigilant about making sure the curb cuts are done correctly. So it sounds really boring and it is really boring, but it's also very expensive. So that's why this is significant.
I had a question about 167 dash seven, completion of work and failure satisfactory complete. Uh, I mean, I noticed 60 days is in here. What do you do about pavement in the winter?
Well, that's a good point. Yeah, because there's January and February can be a little difficult at times.
I mean, you may have a street cut in December and you may not be able to get it installed until March.
I have a suggestion for that. I would suggest that you put language in here that would allow a, a cold patch to be applied with the understanding that once the concrete plants or the asphalt is available, that within 30 days of availability, that the final patch be in, put in place. So in other words, in the spring, you know, once those plants are open again, that the final restoration work is done. But you give them a fine, you define how many days, how, or a month, you know, by, by count the days and put it in the permit.
That's, I would agree with that, Tim. I think that we need to make some provision there as of inclement weather.
And I have, I'll defer, I'll defer to Anne Marie a little bit, but you know, we can definitely do that because we have a temporary trench restoration detail that includes the cold patch, but has a really strong base section that's set up for when permanent trenches restored. You already had that long base section, so we probably could put together some language in that section that allows for that.
Okay, yeah, I think that'd be helpful. I want to thank you for this effort because this has been one of my pet peeves, is just a resident of Lewis. And certainly as a, as a council person, I'm very aware of the damage that has been done to our pub, the, the curves, the gut, the streets and, and the sidewalks. And I'm glad to see that we're finally getting around to addressing that. I do have a couple of things, points I'd like to ask. One of them is I did not see any language in here that included, that required that the contractor who does performing the work is required to be insured and bonded and bonded with a surety bond. And is that something, is that not a practice in this state to do that? And if it isn't, I think we should do it.
It, it's probably a good idea. So we don't require it on private property, but since they're going to be working in, on our property.
Correct.
So with that, with, I mean, a, a couple of changes. Do you want us to bring it back on the 26th, just so that you can see the language that you're adopting? So we, we can address those two things?
Well, don't you have, I mean, would you have to, that's fine, but wouldn't you want to suggest, say that the, the contractor producing, doing the work would have to be licensed within the city of limits with.
But we, we don't require that contractors, do we, actually, Ellen Lorraine, do we require that they're bonded?
I don't think you do.
I think so.
No, and I think it'd be very helpful if they were. The other thing I want to ask, and let me just go through, I have a couple of notes written down, is the language in this suggests, in this ordinance suggests that there is a fee schedule. Uh, but the fee schedule was not attached. Has that been created or is that going to be worked on?
So there is, the, the fee schedule is not part of the ordinance, so we need to add the fees to the fee schedule. The fee schedule is available on the website.
Right. Okay. And do you, and would that fee schedule be a, a product of staff? And then you would just put it in place? Or does that come through council for review and approval, Anne Marie?
The fee schedule, I, I believe Ellen Lorraine sent the fee schedule out with the budget information. Um, and when we do add fees or change fees, that comes through council.
Right.
It may have only been sent to the finance committee.
Okay.
Okay.
We did.
All right.
This year, but we can.
That would be very, I'd like to see that. I, I think all of us would like to see that document. That would be very, I'd like to see that. Uh, I, I'm, I think all of us would like to see that document. Uh, the next. I'm going to direct your attention to one sixty seven dash ten and, uh, there is a prescription there. If I got this right, hold on a second. Yeah. Uh, the exception is, uh, created for BPW employees. And I want to make, does that? Is, does that exception, uh, extend to BPW contractors or just to their employees?
If, if it's a BPW cut, if it, if it's being done on behalf of the BPW, they still have to get the permit. But they are not charged the fee.
I understand that. But my question is, is that. If they, I, I was thinking of this in an emergency setting.
Right.
Where, you know, they had to get out to fix the water main that had broken. Uh, and they, they don't have time to file a permit.
Right.
But they're not doing the work themselves. Their contractor is doing the work. Does this grace of an exception extend to their contractor?
It does. Again, they still have to get the permit and there's a, uh. There's language in here about emergency conditions.
That's correct.
Um, and, and it would be treated the same way that it, it could be done, but then it, at the next business. During the next business hours, the permit would need to be filed and inspected retroactively.
I see. Um, and do you, uh, do you anticipate? I, I guess you don't have any way of knowing, Anne Marie, how many, uh, of these kinds of, um, curb cuts or street. Just cuts, uh, are done in a year because we haven't done permitting before. We don't have any handle on that, do we?
We've done permitting, um. But we have only done it for private. So if the BPW cuts the streets, we have not been requiring them to get permits and that. They do a lot of the street cuts if they have to repair. So, um. I would say we probably issue. I would say less than a dozen permits per year at this point, but I would expect it to go.
Right.
You know, if, if we're issuing them, we're all.
Yeah. And this would of course include Chesapeake gas too.
They do.
I mean, they've.
They do get permits, but I think we need to. Revisit how we do their permits because they get one permit for an entire gas main installation.
Right.
That can involve many cuts. So I think yes, we'll have to apply this to that as well.
Well, any, I mean, they might get one permit for multiple gases installations, but they need to identify all the places they're going to do it.
Right. Right.
Yeah. I would suggest that they actually, yeah. Well, as long as the documentation. That comes with a master permit, as you've described, is very deep, as long as the supporting documentation is complete and very detailed. I have no problem with a master permit, but otherwise I think they should be pulling a permit for each time they disturb.
Okay.
A curb, a street, what have you, a sidewalk.
Okay. So I think where we are at this point is we've got, you've given some direction unless you have more questions, uh, Tim.
No, I'm finished with my questions off.
I think Anne Marie is going to make, and Charlie are going to work on these revisions that we talked about. And we'll see this on the twenty sixth for approval.
That we're deferring. Okay. Thank you.
Just for clarity, so I make sure that I have down what we are. Um, bringing back on the twenty sixth, the issue of temporary patching during the, the winter months. Bonding requirements for the, the contractors cutting the street. And, um, including an attachment of the fee schedules for these fees will be in there.
Uh, thank you, Anne Marie.
And add debris circle.
Oh, that was the other thing I was going to actually add. Thank you.
Got it.
Bonnie, I actually think, I think it would actually be helpful. I like the idea that you be enumerated the. The different roads where this is, um. You know, you spell it out. I think that's very helpful, but I think you should also create an out. And that is if, for example, uh, there, there became a, our traffic flow changed, our demands changed. And then a street that was not heav- heavily used becomes heavily used. I'd like to think that we, this would be adaptable without having to come back and rewrite or address this ordinance. So I think you should just include some sentence, some phrase about, uh, unless otherwise, or. Possibly along the lines of. What, um, at the discretion of, uh, the city manager, you know, something like that. Does that, does that make sense? Say what?
Because Adams Avenue might, might fit in that category.
Exactly. We, things are changing. Yeah, absolutely.
But I think we could add that language in. Right, probably at the front, front end of that paragraph.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. That would be helpful, I think.
So yeah, Amber, you've been Charlie, you have what you need at this point, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll defer on this. Thank you. And then moving on to item I eight, we have deferred on that, uh, until also, uh, April the twenty sixth. Moving then on to, uh, item I nine is presentation possible action recommendation. To con- to contract award, for the contract award for the instruction of the restrooms. At the Margaret H. Rollins Community Center based upon the bids received. Anne Marie alluded to this, uh, earlier in her city manager's contract, uh, con- comments. And I think, um. Charlie, uh, you want to walk us through the bid process and where we are? I know we had an estimate and we included it in the bill. Numerous talks about this during the budget process and a capital projects meetings. And obviously the bits came in considerably higher than what we were anticipating. Want to talk about this a little bit for us?
Yes. And I, I think just as a precursor is that. When we get down to where we're make, where I make my recommendation, we might have a slightly different recommendation than what's in the letter.
Okay.
Not, not terribly different, but it has a little, definitely some nuance to it.
Okay.
But, um, let me work, work my way to that point. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that the, the bids for this Rollins Room Exterior Restroom Edition project were open via public Zoom teleconference. At two o'clock on Tuesday, March thirtieth of this year, we received six bids. The lowest base bid was received from Harper and Sons in the amount of two hundred and eighty nine thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars. There were no bid alternates or, um, anything like that. It was just the total base bid for the project. When we examined the bids, we felt that there was, they were fair. It was a fair bid process. Um, when we threw out the two highest bid amounts, the other four, the four lowest were within twenty two thousand dollars of each other, which. Just tells me that it's a fair and, and good bid. Bid process that, that, you know, there, it wasn't like we had a whole lot of highs and lows. They, they were all pretty close to one another in those top four category. GMB reviewed the bid proposals and, and found that the Harper and Sons bid has everything and included everything that was required by the bid process. And therefore we deem it responsive. So. This is where, you know, in, in the letter, we say that we, GMB recommends an award to Harper and Sons in the amount of two hundred and eighty nine thousand, five hundred and twelve. But as the mayor mentioned, we know this came in above the budgeted amount, um, by. Almost a hundred thousand, ninety six thousand dollars. So, you know, our first idea was to meet with Harper and Sons to value engineer the project. To the, to the satisfaction of the city. We didn't want to cut too much out of it, but we wanted to see if there were some. Various things that we could do to the project, um, you know, materials wise. That could make some difference in, in the cost, um, the total base bid amount. Plus, since then, um, Anne Marie and I have been working with on. COVID relief funding possibilities. And, um, she can certainly speak to it a lot better than I can, but there is. The availability of federal COVID relief. Well, it's. ARPA, uh, funding. That would require Davis Bacon federal wage rates. So we've talked to Harper and Sons. They're open to. Having that discussion about their base bid, but at Davis Bacon wage rates. So what Anne Marie and I have decided to make as our recommendation tonight is that the council would award it. To Harper and Sons based on. The idea that GMB and the city would value engineer the project with Harper and Sons and those. ARPA federal funds would be used for the project with. The caveat that. The whole project wouldn't cost any more than 20% of what the base bid amount is, three hundred and forty seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. So their base bid right now is two eighty nine, five, twelve. If you add 20% to that, it's three forty seven, four, fourteen. What we're asking council to consider is that you allow us to work with Harper and Sons to keep. The price at that three forty seven, four, fourteen or less. After we value engineer it and agree to use the federal funding grant money for this project, which would free up your. Capital amount that you budgeted for other projects. And I know that's a mouthful. So if you have any questions. Definitely feel free to ask.
Can I add a couple of clarifications?
Okay, thank you.
So what, so we don't have confirmation that Davis Bacon wage rates will apply. We are seeking that. Um, we, we have made that request to the state treasurer's office who, um. They are collecting questions for the US treasury and I also mentioned it to Senator Harper's. Staff as well. So they, they will be getting that clarification from, from the, the treasury. But it's highly likely that the Davis Bacon wage rates would apply. And typically when you add the, the Davis Bacon rates, it could, it would increase it up to about twenty thousand or 20%. Due to the increased labor cost. Again, that's. We, we just need the, what we're looking for is the flexibility to, to use that two ninety eight. Five is the base bid, but recognize that we're going to try to value engineer down, but also. That the, the wage rates would bring it up as well.
Are they the only firm that said that they could work with those rates? The Davis Bacon? Was it requested of the others?
So this didn't.
No.
Right. This didn't come into play until right at the same time the, the bids were coming in.
It gave in a little afterwards.
Right.
So we have a question. I have a question about how this work. I, I'm not familiar with how this works. It's Davis Bacon. The rates. Do, do, does that money actually end up with the employees? Or is this just a, it, it does. We have those assurances.
So they, the, the contractors have to, um, maintain. Time sheets that, that demonstrate that they've paid their, their labor, the. The wage rates that are specified. So, um, there's a schedule and, you know, for different types of jobs, it, it tells you how much you have to pay. So fortunately this isn't, we know it's not subject to state prevailing wage rates because the state prevailing wage rates are much higher. The federal wage rates are higher than, you know, just market, but they're, they're lower than the state.
We were originally led to believe that perhaps Davis Bacon wouldn't apply.
Right.
However, since then, we've had further clarification that indicates that Davis Bacon may apply and we still don't have that clarification. Correct, Anne Marie?
That is correct.
So we, it's still possible that there may be a waiver on it, although it seems improbable.
Is there, um, you know, when I look at this, uh, the cut sheet that shows the six different contractors and their base bid. There's only a two thousand, two thousand dollar delta between, uh, Harper and Sons and Gillis Gilkerson. That's really not an important delta to me. Is there any reason why we would? Is there any benefit to be derived by? Opening a discussion with Gillis Gilkerson? Do, you know, do they do better work? For example, are they a, a better known contractor? A general contractor? Well, I, I don't, you know, what? It's gotta be more than just about the dollars.
Well, not according to the charter.
Just accept the lowest bid.
The charter requires you to take the lowest responsible bid.
Yeah.
And, and to your point, Tim, you know, our GMB's architectural experience with Harper and Son has been 100%. They're, they're a really good contractor.
Charlie, can you speak to how the, how the bond, uh, is calculated? Cause of, for instance, the Delmarva Veterans Builders, their, their bond amount was. Much larger than the others. Is that? There's some experience or how, how's that work?
They, I think they did theirs at 10% of the bid amount, didn't they?
Yeah.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah, which the others didn't, didn't do that. They, they just got what they. I guess they went to their insurance companies and they said, well, we need to bond this project for two hundred and eighty nine thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars. What's that going to cost? And their insurance company said fifty one hundred dollars.
Did they provide, provide any supporting documentation for that? Have I overlooked that? Are we sure that the bond is in fact, you know, giving us what we need, getting us what we need?
Yes, I'm pretty certain that's in there. I'll have to double check that, Tim.
Well, the other thing is that the, the fifty one hundred from, in bonding from Harper's is. Is, is hot, they're the lowest bid, but they're in. They're, they're the highest, other than the outlier of thirty five thousand, they're, they're the, they're the highest, uh, bid, but bond premium.
Right.
Right. And in addition. We don't know what that's a, we don't know what that's a reflection of at this point in time.
Could be their insurance.
They're all, they're all kind of in the same ball, frankly. I mean, there's not a huge. Couple, a couple of hundred bucks difference between them.
Well, except for Harper, who's much larger.
Well, except for the.
As you've noted, yeah.
Yeah, except for the, uh, the, the Delmarva Veteran Builders, which is. Not comparable to any of the other. Of the, any of the other contractors bids.
Remember, we're going to hold back 10% retainage all through the project. So. We have some leg there as well, Tim.
To, to answer Tim's question, we always, we always require that performance bond document before we begin construction.
Right.
Um, we, we didn't require it as part of the bid, but they, they give us what the cost of it would be. Cause now architectural contractors aren't used to doing that. They're. They're not like our site, our utility engineering contractors like a Teal or George and Lynch that do that routinely for every project. Architectural contractors aren't used to providing that sort of performance bond.
I did not realize that they were architectural contractors. I did not realize that. So they provide architectural design work as well as the, uh, the general, the GC work as well?
No. Is a, they build, they build buildings, you know, George and Lynch and Teal, they put pipes in the ground or pave roads. These guys bu- build buildings and they're in building, buildings. They don't typically get the performance bonds. At least that's what Morgan was telling me.
So you, you'd see EDIS or Richard Y. Johnson getting up these kind of bonds. Not Teal. Or JJID.
What about the, uh, what do you think as far as the impact of needing more than 90 days to complete this, uh, project? Are we satisfied? Is that an issue for us?
Well, they're going to need at least a hundred and twenty days, which. And even that, they say is difficult and mostly it's difficult just for delivery of materials right now.
Yeah. How many, uh, Charlie sidebar question? How many square feet is this addition?
Good question. I, I don't know. Let me, let me look.
It's not very big.
No. Let's see.
Under five hundred, I think, well under five hundred.
It's, let's see, twelve times. Yeah, it's, it's a little bit less than three hundred square feet out to out. And that doesn't include the portico, but the portico is just, you know, a covering on the sidewalk side.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will say that it didn't surprise me that it came in over, I mean, anybody who's been to the hardware store lately and, and priced lumber. It's insane. In fact, I was talking to someone who's building a house, not in Lewis, but actually in North Carolina. And their construction project specifically had a clause about passing through these increased lumber costs. It's fortunate, but it's, it's just out there.
Very, very, very common today.
We had calculated a thirty percent increase from COVID twenty twenty. But what they're telling us is, is that the prices of lumber are fifty percent higher than that.
Yeah, all you need to do is go to local lumberyard, you can see where that, where the shortages are. All right, are there other questions? I think the proposal that's, that Charlie and Anne Marie have laid out here provides a lot of flexibility and, and obviously there's. There's a lot more to learn about how we can possibly do some value engineering to get this price down a little bit. And then if we can utilize the, the ARPA funding, that will help us all over. As we know, the study will receive one point six million dollars in monies. And this is something that the funds could be, would be applicable to.
Amory, how soon do you, Amory, how soon do you expect to get the guidelines, the answers to the questions that you've asked? Do you have any idea?
So the, the funds are supposed to be available to us. By June, we're hoping that they get the, the questions answered. You know, by May, when, when funds are transmitted to the state. So.
I don't think this is a unique question. I think a lot of, I think a lot of municipalities are having the same question. So I suspect we'll get guidance on this pretty quickly, Tim.
Okay.
And I suspect the answer is going to be exactly what Ted said. It, it would be, it's inconceivable to me. That they wouldn't require those wage rates.
I can't imagine, given, given what the money was approved for, I can't imagine they would approve a lower funding rate.
Not, not in this administration.
And that's exactly, that was one of the comments that I got from one of the people at the International City County. Management Association was that they couldn't imagine a scenario where President Biden would not. Would, would try to loosen up the wage rates.
Right, yeah.
It, it's kind of contrary to the, you know, labor.
Well, it's also completely inconsistent, it would be completely inconsistent with the reason for getting this federal money out there, which is. Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's, it's a given.
Right, so my, my thought is if we, that we're, we're going to start. Moving in that direction, assuming that that will apply, and if we have to, you know. If, if we're at the point of signing the, the documents and we don't have clarification, we'll, we'll go with it because we don't want to hold it up for several months. Given that this is where we're going to be holding our meeting.
Right, okay. All right.
Thank you, Amory.
So I can make a motion?
Please, Bonnie, that would be good.
Okay, I'd like to make, to make a motion that we approve the recommendation on contract award. For construction of restrooms at the Margaret, Margaret H. Rollins Community Center. Based on the bids received and as modified in the discussion this evening with respect to prevailing wage rates and the, the source of the funding.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tim. We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Charlie and Anne Marie, thank you. Hopefully we can see some, we can realize some benefit in the value engineering, but also. Hopefully we get that clarification as soon as possible, so then. Moving on to item I ten is discussion of possible action to set a public hearing on the resolution, mayor and city council. Of the city of Lewis, Delaware proposing had a public hearing held on the subject of amending article nine. Environmental Protection Regulations of Chapter one ninety-seven zoning of the municipal code of the city of Lewis, Delaware. By amending section one ninety-seven dash seventy-five Water Resource Protection Areas, Source Water Protection Overlay. We need to set a public hearing on this, and I think we're looking at doing this the first week in May, which is. The week of the third.
Can't make it the third week in May?
No. You don't get off that. Simple answer to that, no. Okay.
I'll make a motion to that.
Although we need a motion, I, I think we're looking at either the, the first or the third or the fifth as two possible dates.
Okay.
It's a Monday or a Wednesday.
Either one's fine with me.
Does anybody have conflicts?
I'm good, either day.
All right, so how about if we do it on the third at? At six thirty, or six o'clock? That we do it at six, six thirty, which is better for everybody.
Six is fine.
Okay, I think six was probably not a bad idea, given the fact that we're going to do this, and I think the next one we're going to tie with it, so. It's going to be a long public hearing, I suspect. So let's start at six, okay, so we're looking at May the third at six o'clock in the evening. Motion to set that date, please.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rob, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Then I eleven is discussion of possible action to set a public hearing on the resolution, mayor, city council, Lewis, Delaware proposing. A public hearing to be held on the subject of amending article nine Environmental Protection Regulations. Chapter one ninety-seven zoning of municipal code of the city of Lewis, creating one ninety-seven dash seventy-eight point one resiliency. This will be a resiliency order, resolution of resiliencees, sea level rise, sea level rise, design standards and resiliency, sea level coordinates. Draft, this again, I think we can deal with on the evening of the third. Immediately following the other public hearing. For you all.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so you think like about a two hour hearing, is, is that what you're thinking, Ted?
I think it might be longer than that, Tim.
Okay, thank you.
Based on the public comment I've heard, I suspect that this will be a rather lengthy public.
Thank you, I, it's just for planning purposes only, that's all.
It's walk your dogs early.
That's just. Exactly, and frequently, yeah.
You can go home and do that later. Anyway, all right, so we, we have a motion to set that public hearing also then.
So moved.
Thank you, Bonnie, for a second.
Second.
Okay, Rob, thank you. Motion a second, all in favor?
So just for Janine's, that, that's for May third, Monday, May third, at six o'clock following. Okay.
All right, anything else to bring forward here this evening? Other than a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I thought, I was counting on you to say. Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second, or would you all like to stay a little longer? Thanks, Rob. Bye, thank you and have a good evening.
I'll see you again.
Uh, yes, several times.
Thank you.